Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
It is good to be in person. I'll just stop there and with you in person. It's good to be with you tonight, this afternoon. And really quite truthfully excited about this presentation and about the next five years. As the thrust of this entire presentation is, and if you'll pardon me, I can hear myself a little better this way, that this is an unprecedented time. It's been the theme for the past year. And now we can say that with the glass half full in terms of funding, that the opportunities that you have now really have changed the game in the past few months in looking ahead as to what's possible and what's going to get done, what can get done here. So I know you all have a copy of this, and I'm going to go through the first through the appendix slides, not into the appendix except for reference as need be, but just want to set the table here a little bit. So as you know, when we began this work in the fall of 19, winter of 2020, and looking at some different options to look at a district-wide, a division-wide study as opposed to region by region, school by school, boundary by boundary, a nip and tuck approach, we were going for a division-wide approach to look at what is the holistic strategic picture? Where are your kids? Where are they going? Where's your capacity? Where is it needed? Where do you have surplus? How does that dovetail with the conditions of your buildings, the utilizations therein, and what does that look like in the long view? As we started developing some options, met with the steering committee, very engaged committee, on the 25th of February to review those draft options that we supposed out there just for consideration based upon that data, and had a community dialogue in March. And that was the last time we could be in person. Then it all shut down after that. So we had to go virtual for the next steering committee meeting. We actually extended, doubled up that meeting because of it. And then we just had to stop because everybody had much more pressing matters to consider in the next two weeks as opposed to looking at a five to 10-year look ahead. So we paused and then after much deliberation in the beginning of 2021 of this year, in consultation with district, division leadership, it's okay, it's time. People are accustomed to this virtual world now, and we can get our steering committee back together. We can release the survey. And so we did. Met virtually to restart the process in the end of March, had two rounds of virtual community meetings on April the 13th and 15th, which we facilitated, had some really constructive feedback and commentary and dialogue from those who were able to participate in that. And we had a recommendations meeting after that with your division to look at all of the data, to look at the feedback to date, and to look at this new reality with federal funds and what that implied in terms of our planning priorities and opportunities. Reviewed that draft plan of recommendations, which was about 95% what you see tonight with the committee on May the 10th. Had a few small tweaks since then, and here we are. So we had originally anticipated to be here 12 months ago to present this to you, and then COVID knocked everything off course. But here we are, getting back into it. So let's go, what are the big, next slide here, Karen? Community feedback. So we had this survey open, we're embedded, I don't know if you saw it, but embedded little short video descriptions of the content, and then asked for people's feedback. Open from the 12th of April through the 9th of May. We had 148 participants, and we asked framing questions relative to building condition, utilization, prioritizations, and so forth, looking at each of the regions that we have by planning area. You had consensus on one thing, and that is to take action, that your buildings need work, and they need it now. There was quite a lot of divergence when you got into the particulars, as to what particular strategies you would look at. Sometimes you see a clear front runner in those preference charts, and there was a lot of preferences that were basically a wash. You have a relatively smaller sample size, 150. When you get down to the smaller percentage changes, it was a wash. What it was, but when we asked the questions about overarching, big picture, what needs to be done, should this district need to take to raise additional capital? What would you like to tell us in more of an open question? It was action. We need, we need to have our schools, as we've been saying throughout this process, warm, safe, cool, dry, and educationally appropriate for every kid, every day. There was no divergence on that one. And so that call to action from your community was echoed very strongly in our steering committee meetings throughout, pre and post pandemic. And then when we sat down to reconvene this process, ESER III passed. And the funds that you were allocated to your district made a significant difference. Karen, next page, please. Page three. This is where, this is where we get clarity, I believe. And I've done, I've done this for a number of years, and where a lot of the murkiness becomes is, how much money can we actually get? When are we actually going to get it? And for years here, this has been your, your challenge in spades. You have not had nearly enough money to deal with all of your capital needs. That's been more than apparent, and it's been, how do we squeeze the most important priorities, of which we have dozens, out of this little bucket of funding that's not nearly enough? But with ESER, you now have, over the next five years, between the federal funding and between the increase in your CIP allocations locally, which are significant, over an 11X increase in your average historical capital spending outlay. That is game-changing in terms of what you have available to you. So when we total up your local CIP dollars for next year, that's the bird in the hand. And then the same with the federal funding or the American Recovery Plan, ESER III, synonymous, that's the ARP. And then you look at the 2022 to 25 ask. You have the $9 million guaranteed, you're asking for the 16. That's a total of $165.7 million in the next five years in capital funds when you're accustomed to a fraction of that. It's a lifetime's worth of funding, unfortunately for you, relatively speaking, looking back. Even if you look at just what's in the hand, we're talking about $28 million difference. That's still 137-ish million, significant. When we looked at that budget, and I modeled it using our own assessment tools and our own cost estimating valuations using gross order modeling. And then your division's operations team did a bottom-up estimation. We both came to the same conclusion independently, that you can take care of your worst schools, I call them the envelope and air, Rick calls them the big four, roofs, windows, doors, You can take care of, in the next five years, every kid having a warm, safe, cool, and dry facility, period. You have the funds to do that now. Now you also have, along that, you have this historic decline in enrollment, you have that enrollment loss, nobody's surprised by that. Everybody knows that. You have some areas of surplus capacity, you have some schools that are well beyond their useful life and got to go for that reason. And then you have some schools that really should be rebuilt, MAURI, others, which the doing so would swallow all of these funds whole. And of course, when you look at, could we spend it all on one or two schools? Or could we improve, make sure that every kid has a warm, safe, cool, dry school? All the roofs, all the windows, all the HVAC taken care of in the next five years of those that are in the worst condition? So that's a done deal, that's signed, sealed, delivered for our kids. It's an easy decision. It's not a decision. It's clear as day, like what can happen there and for your kids. And that is a huge opportunity. So the next slide, please. Originally, we were still operating without these funds in mind, and we were looking at up to about a dozen complete rebuilds, knowing full well, we didn't have the money for that. You didn't have the money for that. But what we were looking at was, we needed to make this plan a movement to secure what you need. You need to identify what you need, need to go out there and make the case, build the support, and this is not a report on a shelf. It is a beginning of something to advocate for your needs and to get it for your kids and your teachers, your community. When these funds came in, and we realized that you could pivot that money that you will have and take care of more than two dozen of worst-conditioned roofs, windows, doors, HVAC units, clear? That's what, that's what we have to recommend. You know, professionally, ethically, that's what I have to feel like that's what had to recommend as our team. And so when we're looking at that, we propose these rebuilds, and we're going to get to some of those targeted rebuilds here in a minute. A lot of those rebuilds were predicated on the fact that the cost to do these envelope and air issues were so much, they were driving up the FCI's of your buildings or the Facility Condition Index, the cost to repair divided by cost to replace, so high that it didn't make much sense to try to nip and tuck in them with your own dollars. But when you have this outside money coming in and taking care of $165 million of it, well, now that changes thinking a little bit, quite a lot, actually. Especially when you look in sequencing of time, when these deficiencies are scheduled to hit your buildings, and you take care of the lot of them over the next 10 years, well, five years with this funding, and the highest priority for your biggest need, clean air, not leaking on me, that you take care of those things, you seal the envelope, you have your clean HVAC, you have buildings that were designed before fresh air ventilation was a thought necessary. And so just the upgrades that you can do right now are just imminently apparent, something that needs to be done, in my opinion. Next slide, please. We are looking at some possibility of up to four rebuilds, and here's how, here's how we're currently working with your division and recommending for these. One, MAURI, no secret, big building, lots of needs. As beautiful as that old facade is, you know, you got issues. And in simply keeping it for the long haul is not a viable option, frankly, in my opinion and that of others spoken with. Now that money is not in this budget, of course, that would take the lion's share of those envelope and air dollars out of everything else. And we want to do the most good for the most kids in the shortest amount of time for the best bang for your buck. And that's, that's your envelope and air. And then on top of this, you have your oldest elementary schools, original construction with the highest FCI's and the highest condition needs in Granby, Jaycocks, and Norview. That we recommend, along with MAURI, having that advocacy, that communication, that let's rebuild these schools. We need to go get that money. We need to secure that money from outside these sources to take care of our basics. We've got to take care of the basics. And as we do that, to rebuild these schools. But to make sure that this is not simply a wish list, that stays a wish list on a shelf, but something that gets into an action plan, which is what we are intent on doing, is that you'll see in a couple of slides here, a trigger point where these decisions need to be made within the community, and I know it's a dance, it's a communication with the city, but a decision point of, if these schools are not going to be rebuilt in the next 10 years, then they need to be in our CIP plan. They need to be in that maintenance plan because you can't ignore them. And so the current strategy right now is those, and what will be discussed later in the CIP discussion, is they're budgeting, your division's budgeting for these in the CIP, but if you can rebuild it, or at least a gut renovation, major reno, then that can change some of those allocations, and then those can go elsewhere to take care of the next needs in line because you got them. And you can make sure that over the next five years, we keep good on that promise of warm, safe, cool, and dry. Now, along with it, on the consolidations, you do have, and mentioned, you have these schools that are just beyond repair when it comes to condition. Madison, clear and easy. That has been a known entity for a while, a known issue for a while in terms of condition. It's time for that building to go. Tidewater Park, that is not much, that is happening, that is area redevelopment, that is, that's just, that's city, that's happening. And so to plan for it rather than react to it, you have the surplus capacity in that area anyway, let's get ahead of that. So anticipate a redevelopment by 2023, you'll see how that staged in the sequencing plan. Easton, repurposing, closing up Fair Lawn here over the next year, as with the K8 at Lake Taylor. And that is, when discussed, a great opportunity to build a centralized, well-resourced pre-K center in this area, merging with Easton, getting out of that high FCI building, having a robust program. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but again, you want a critical mass of this program in order to be well-resourced and sustainable, and you have these two district programs, you have the opportunity to make a, one that's more well-resourced and robust. So we think that one's a strong recommendation. And Lindenwood, you have a school that is undersized in terms of its enrollment. Again, it's a resource challenge. When you have undersized schools, you can't not supplement the budget in order to have a well-resourced, or you have it under-resourced. Those are the only two logical options. And so in an area with significant surplus capacity with the condition needs that it has, and it's undersized, and the fact that the decline in enrollment is no secret, it's been around, it's chronic, this just seems like something we have to recommend as well. We believe, and I say this in full confidence, that this is a conservative consolidation plan for your division, given the stakes, given the conditions of the buildings, given the enrollment history and the capacities. This is a conservative plan in terms of the consolidation that takes a very targeted approach based upon specific area conditions of building and capacity and enrollment, without trying to be too aggressive on closures, consolidations, because we know that part of that consolidation that's happening is choice. And if, not if, but when you have these federal dollars, you have these funds, these increases in CIP, and you spend those to make sure that every kid has that warm, safe, cool, dry building, I believe that that can change some of these choice behaviors out. You know, you have that, you have that taken care of for your kids. So this is a step. Now, there's some possible ones in the next five years. This is what we're recommending. You can see in the outer years, there's potential others to consider, but that's far enough out with other things that may factor in that we're not comfortable putting a line in the sand on those at this moment. Next slide, please. When we talk about the rebuilding and consolidations of schools for those six or seven schools mentioned here recently, or eight, rather, you'll see, we've put together this little grid to hopefully explain it and with these sort of visuals to denote what the major drivers are of each of the different considerations for rebuild or consolidation. So this is just sort of a visual cue as to where we're going to go. The next slide, I want to spend a minute on, because this is looking at a recommendation for phasing the recommendations from this master plan over the next five years, and then picking it up from there and taking another look at that point as you monitor and update every year as the data comes in. One, you look at the spending plan. How you read this is vertically and then to the right. So starting at the top, you have the funding by year anticipated. You see it's front-loaded here. Want to take care of those roofs and those HVAC units sooner rather than later. You want to seal those buildings in the top, make sure that there, you know, you have that seal there that prevents mold and so forth, and take care of your HVAC units. Do that, those big, heavy, expensive items before escalation catches up with you in the outer years, and you're paying more for the same thing on those big items. When you go down to, you know, these funds have to be spent by September of '24, I think it says '23, but given how the law works, you have till '24. So below that, year one of the master plan implementation, '21 to '22, recommend moving the Madison program and consolidating that building, getting out of that building. Moving it conceivably, we're recommending, to consider Rosemont. There's surplus capacity at that school, the wings are arranged so that you can have separate programs operating and not mixing, given how the building is arranged, it's surplus capacity, and the fact that the program there, the alternative high school program, fluctuates greatly, enrollment down to quite small enrollment numbers. We are confident that that will work and from a, from a program standpoint, from capacity standpoint, in keeping them separate. One of our key philosophies in doing this kind of work is that every option should be a physical trade-up for students. You should be going to a building, you shouldn't be going from a really poor-conditioned building to another really poor-conditioned building. When you look at Rosemont, in this case, has a 70% FCI, but a lot of that, and all of the priority one deficiencies, the most urgent, are roofs and windows, they're taken care of in these ESER funds as you go through it. So you have that funds coming in to renovate that program. Okay, so you get out of the Madison building. Then you look at, in 2022 to '23, consolidate Easton into Fair Lawn over this next year to do the renovations that you would need to Fair Lawn to get it ready and the programmatic prep and transportation, all that kind of stuff, to have that consolidated pre-K center, to have that year to plan, you open it in '22, '23 school year, consolidating Easton and getting out of that poor-conditioned building. 2023, '24, consolidate Tidewater Park and Lindenwood to area elementary schools. Tidewater Park mentioned in St. Paul's Development, we all are aware of that. Lindenwood, Lindenwood is in the elementary planning area that has the highest percentage choice out rate of all the elementary schools, 22% choice out rate. It has the lowest utilization rate, 59% utilization. So you have 40% of the capacity is surplus, which is the lowest in the division. Highest leave rate, lowest utilization in that area, and you know, that's with the undersized school, which in order to not be under-resourced would need to be supplemented. Why do people choose choice out? I don't know. I haven't talked to them all, but I can tell you from doing this everywhere else, one of the key denominators is the school isn't resourced well for the parent's demands and needs. So you want to resource it well, you position yourself to resource it well, and you have that one consolidation in '23 to '24. So that's the consolidation line we recommend in the next three years. Looking at the next line there, this is where we're advocating for and making your decision on rebuilds. Recommend that you spend the next year as part of the master plan, moving from a what should we do phase for the facilities master plan to how do we get it done? And it's an implementation plan. Yes, you're monitoring your enrollment every year. Yes, you're monitoring and updating your building conditions every year, so the master plan is a living document, but you are not stuck in analysis paralysis thinking every year, what should we do, what should we do, what should we do? No, you make, you have your plan, now you're implementing it as you go and updating it as the data would suggest. It's a, it's a dance. You determine which schools to prioritize rebuilding over this next school year. And then 2022 to '23 school year, those schools that are not going to be rebuilt, you make that determination, work with the city, you know, work with your stakeholders and engaging in that. And that is something that we are eager to do and honored to do, that kind of work, to make it real. Those schools that are not going to be rebuilt, we have it in CIP, keep it in the CIP, and you fund it. Those schools that are going to be rebuilt, we repurpose those CIP dollars and we look at what needs to happen. Okay? And then in '23 on, '23 to '25, really that would be an approximate recommended timeline to, once you have that decision on what's to be rebuilt, to advocate, make the case for those rebuilding funds, to secure them, and then looking at an outer five to 10 years of project execution with funds in hand. Giving yourself time to identify, prioritize, communicate, secure funding, and then implement it in a reasonable but sequential timeframe, a reasonable timeframe there. And the third swim lane of this is performing, starting next year with the ARP funds, doing your envelope and air renovations, taking care of those roofs, those envelopes, HVAC issues with the CIP and federal funds concurrently. Again, and then looking at best practices, you do a comprehensive plan like this. Really, every three is pretty aggressive, five is normal. And then you monitor it and update and tweak yearly. So that's the big picture about what we're recommending and why. And if you go to the next slide here, goes into some more, a little bit deeper level perhaps, on some of the why behind some of the recommendations. When we look at Granby Elementary School, why consider rebuild? Well, again, we're looking at some of the oldest schools with the highest FCI's, that's our starting point. 47%, half of its condition needs are coming up to you in the next 10 years. So these are things that are beyond their useful life right now or will be. So you have a fairly high percentage of these needs that are urgent and with a high FCI, and it's one of the oldest. Other considerations really aren't there right now, but the recommendation would be based on that alone to rebuild at around 600 capacity. Jaycocks, next page, similar, similar issue. It's condition, condition, condition. It's a big school, high FCI. And when you have a big school that has a high FCI, that's saying something. It's easy to have a high FCI with a very small little footprint of a school because the condition needs that you have have an outsized influence on its replacement value. But when you have a big school that used to house 1,100 kids like this one, and it has a 76 FCI, there's a lot. It's a lot going on in that building, with two-thirds of those needs in the next 10 Lastly, Norview on the rebuild. Age of the building is nearly 70 years old, nearly 70 FCI, a quarter of its needs are priority one and two, but that's not the only factor. When you look at Norview, it is smaller, it's smaller than your standard elementary school size, it's over 100% utilized as well. So you look at those different factors, what needs to happen here? You advocate for the funds, you rebuild it to your standard sustainable-size school for the long haul, for the next 100 years. Okay. Next, page 11 on the consolidations. Madison, don't think we need to spend too much time on that one. We know Madison, the condition of the program, the building, rather, the building is in poor shape, the program really needs, needs a better physical home. We look at Easton preschool, next page, we have a high FCI and the opportunity to create a more consolidated and well-resourced pre-K center. We all know the value of a quality pre-K education, what that means for short and long-term outcomes. We have that opportunity, let's make it well-resourced, let's do it right. You have, you have the buildings to do that, you put them together, and you have a sustainable population size there to execute that program. Next page, Tidewater Park, we know what's going on here again with the developments going on in the area, that's happening by '23, '24. It also has a high FCI, and with utilization there of the building, you could consider, would you consolidate the grades, some of those grades into Ruffner as a 3-8, leaving your area pre-K two that could continue at PB Young? Yes, you would need some rezoning that likely goes with this, but whenever you do a consolidation, of course, or a new build, you're going to have some rezoning. And that's one of the things that we're going to conclude with here, again, is that rezoning effort is something that requires the due diligence of data analyses and engagement that deserves its own work and its own focus, that cannot be given its due when you're trying to figure out what should we do from a capital standpoint. Once you have that set, and I think I mentioned this in previous meetings, it is our opinion that you first order businesses, you figure out what you need from a capital standpoint, the cost of, you know, capital standpoint, the cost of, you know, relative cost of investment versus replacement, what you need from utilization, so on and so forth, program support. And then you figure out how to implement it. And one of the key things, decision points for how to implement it is our, is the boundary and redistricting discussion, maybe feeder pattern alignment. And that's when you look at making sure that we're promoting equitable access to those schools, which we have a little bit of a beta, a beta analysis to go over here in a minute to, to show what we're seeing, at least in one case. And then Lindenwood, we have a high FCI, slide 14, small capacity, sub 300, given the recent demolition of those buildings, wings that were beyond repair. And you have the potential to rezone portions of these school, of school to Monroe, Taylor and, and Willard. And this is where we want to look at, we did a quick, quick what-if example, which you'll see on the, the next slide. We said, okay, so let's assume, we're not gonna, you know, where the boundaries aren't drawn, but let's assume that we're going to use natural boundaries and major roads in this area and just draw some quick boundaries if that, you know, I give, with this school being consolidated. What would that look like? That's slide 15. And I'm going to ask Matt, who did that work, to get up and explain a little bit. But what you see here in, when Lindenwood is when it, when it would be consolidated, you actually get a general favorable improvement in your SES balance at the school. So I'm going to let Matt explain.
Thank you, David. Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. So like you said, when we were looking at a scenario for consolidating Lindenwood, some questions came up about, you know, are there schools in the area with surplus capacity to take in those students and what might the potential impact be on the percentage economically disadvantage at particular schools? So we really kind of identified three schools with excess capacity in close proximity that had potential to take in, you know, consolidated students from Lindenwood. Again, this was kind of a very quick analysis. We would recommend a separate boundary process, as David explained. But when looking at Monroe, Taylor and, and Willard, those three schools have about a combined utilization of the students that live within their boundaries of about 60%. So consolidating the Lindenwood students into those three schools, you see we could get two of them, Taylor and Willard, up over 80% from their current of the low 60s. And Monroe, which is about only half full now, not quite as high, but into the low 60 percentages. And looking at the economically disadvantaged, we see that Monroe has a high concentration. So we didn't change it much, but it, it went in the right direction, lowering a couple of points. And then both Taylor and Willard would be moving closer to the district average in this scenario. So again, just kind of looking at, you know, quickly what might make sense based on, on roads and geography, but we would recommend, you know, a separate boundary process. We develop an interactive tool, meet with impacted stakeholders. We can, we can have them, you know, interactively develop different scenarios and see what the impacts are under different criteria, and then come up with a couple draft options, take those to focus groups or, or larger community meetings to get impact from the community or feedback from the community before making a recommendation for a boundary scenario. So.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt. Just wanted to give a, a flavor of what the flow of the master planning process can look like in a boundary planning process, which is taking that same back and forth of data gathering. This is a, you know, a mock beta example of that. Of course, it's much more fleshed out in the, in the full deal. And then working with, what is the data telling us? What are we trying to achieve? Here are some options, vet those options. What do you think? Preferences, benefits, challenges? And we would come back to you with a similar document focused on the specifics of creating the right boundary to account for all of the different challenges that's actionable and meet your goals for each of these targeted consolidations. Lastly, you look at the next slide here, 16. I'm not going to go over all of this in, in line by line, but we concatenated all of the different schools with what, where the planning area was that we were looking in the beginning, high schools and middle schools being considered together, and then elementary schools by geographic proximity. We looked at what the original options were, of course, and if it's just a dash, then it was just repair and maintenance. Generally speaking, the utilization was in acceptable range, the condition was in acceptable range. But you see the original option, maybe rebuild, maybe CTE, convert to K8 or status quo, you see down the line. Now the current recommendations and with some explanatory notes. Again, when you look at something that used to be a rebuild, let's say Calcott, you go down, you know, the, one of the options originally was a rebuild, recommendations now is the envelope and air renovations. Why? Again, because when you have those envelope and air renovations dollars given to you, that effectively lowers the FCI. The FCI is a budgeting tool that tells you how, at what point do you stop investing in fixing this up and replace it from an investment of dollars standpoint? Then you've got to look at the, the quality of those deficiencies to see what's actually broken, what is that impacting in terms of the health of this building? Is it more health related? Is it more aesthetic related? And when you take care of these big ticket financial items that also have big health impacts, your envelope and air, that substantially lowers both the quantity of your FCI and the quality deficiency of the building, which resets your bar of opportunity for what to do with these buildings. You also have career tech, for example, those renovations, those recommendations don't go away. Those are programmatic in nature and, and they are of high value. However, given again, the, the funding that you have in hand, the recommendation that we have is that you use that, if you, that proverbial bird in the hand, right? You use that to, over the next five years, take care of those first order needs, warm, safe, cool, dry. And you focus then on years six to 10 on educationally adequate and rebuilding. And then you move out of always being behind your deferred maintenance cycle and not being able to catch up and, and just wondering where to put it, to being ahead of that. And now we are upgrading and we're rebuilding. And you get on more of a predictable financial capital cycle, which is where you want to be. Okay? And you can, you'll see that over the next, the next couple of slides. And you see, for example, Norview on the, on slide 17, row two is rebuild or envelope and air. That's that trigger point that we recommend over the next year deciding and determining which schools would be rebuilt, which would not. And those that aren't, go back into your envelope and air ARP or ESER funds. Those that are, those funds can be reallocated elsewhere. So that is the next five years worth of recommendations that we focus. It's, it's getting those basics right sealed up, getting ahead of that deferred maintenance backlog, and then moving into educational adequacy writ large and/or rebuilds in the year six, 10. In those outer years, slide 19, there are some other potential consolidations, but we weren't comfortable saying that that needed to happen right now for a variety of reasons. One, Terrillton, you have a high FCI of 60. It's slightly undersized, you see a 405. But, you know, there are other complicating factors here, given its location, base, and the, the needs there that maybe you, this isn't urgent. It's not as urgent of a, of a condition need or utilization need or an undersized need as some of your other buildings. It's something to keep an eye on. That's what these future considerations are for consolidation. It's just something to keep an eye on as you look at the data every year and considering the alternatives. What act, when schools get rebuilt at larger capacities, that can start to change your calculus in these outer years, depending upon, you know, boundaries and so forth. Berkeley Campus Stella, early childhood center, you have a high FCI, you have a low capacity. Now for an ECC, that capacity is, you know, fine, but you still have a high FCI there. And then you look at what's that program doing over the next five years for your ECC? What's the best fit for facilities and location? Something to keep an eye on. Maybe it stays, maybe it doesn't. Not something that we think is prudent to put a, a line in the sand on that today. And then lastly, there's the question mark of St. Paul's redevelopment and what that might imply in terms of a need for new school. Maybe, you know, with work in PB Young, maybe that could help account for that, but maybe not. And just depends. And so it's just, again, one of these, let's keep an eye on it annually, look at our enrollment, look at our, look at what actually comes forth and manifests in the rebuild. Don't need, it's not a first order decision, we believe, at this moment. And that's, that's the lion's share. The rest goes into the appendix documents showing how we got here. Now what, before I close for, for Q and A, wanted to come back to, to that original sentiment from the steering committee and from the community about the call to action. And we heard this a lot. It's time for decisions to be made. We need to move forward. We need to take care of our schools. Well, and that frustration was palpable and understandable in, in what was, I, I sensed a strong consensus at both communities and steering committee around the seize the moment, the carpe diem of this funding. Let's do it like you've got it. We can do a lot. It's got to be spent in the next few years. You got it? It's got to be spent and we can distribute it to make good on our promise for warm, safe, cool and dry for every kid. And you have a path to do that now. And that's incredibly exciting, incredibly exciting. And, you know, it's, it's going to be an honor to, it's been an honor to work with you and your community to develop this plan that has had twists and turns and pandemics and, and all sorts of things. But where it lands right now, it just seems something, I can't recommend anything else, to be frank, at this moment, but to take care of those high pressing needs, to do those logical few consolidations as, as needed, to keep tabs on these, on this data, to advocate for those rebuilding of those schools, to organize your community around them as, let's do this together. As you're rebuilding and investing in your community, I think this is going to be a very exciting next five years. And as we do it, as we do it, as we look at each of these steps, that your community engagement continues in the same logic of, let's identify the target, let's get some data, let's develop some options, let's get community feedback on that when it comes to boundaries, when it comes to prioritizing projects, when it comes to identifying prioritizing rebuilds, even when it comes to the design insofar as you have say over those things. So with that, I'm going to conclude the initial presentation and open the floor to questions and comments.
Thank you, David and Matt. I saw Ms. Campson, Ms. Smith, and then Dr. Gabriel, and then Mr. Jordan, and then Carlos, sorry, and Tanya. Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I have a ton of questions, but I've tried to only add, put a few in because I know other people have questions too. So if, if we look at the 12 schools rebuild.
Yep.
Or look at the 25 wraparound, what do you call them? We're calling them wraparound.
I, I call them envelope and air.
Envelope, okay. I understand. That sounds, that's a cute name.
Your roofs, your windows, your doors and your HVAC.
So if we go rebuild.
Right.
And the money that would have gone to those schools to do these constant endless maintenance now goes into the pot that we'll continue to get of that money. Am I correct? In other words, wouldn't the amount, as you take it away from the schools you're building and put it up, there's a certain line of, and this is probably a question that I should ask Steve.
No, 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 no. You're good. I think I understand your question. Let me take a snap, a crack at it. So the 12 rebuilds would blow your federal funding out of the water.
Yeah.
You don't have enough for that.
But we'll never get that again.
You have enough federal funds right now to rebuild Maury. Period.
Oh, I thought when I saw it, there was Maury in three schools.
That's what we're going to advocate for above and beyond.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
But, but in terms of money that you have, when we look at the current requests plus the money that you have, it's 165.7 million. When you look at the more conservative, conservative estimate would be 137 to 138, right? But of what's, you know, what's guaranteed right now, but you look at what the, the request in is, that's 165.7. Okay? That, Maury's estimates are what? 125 to 1, 38 to 150.
And the elementary schools are what, about 45?
So yeah, that's on page five. Jay Cox, estimated at 30 million, Norview at 26 million, Granby at 23. And so the, the plan right now is with the money that you actually have secured, warm, safe, cool, dry for everybody. With, then you take this plan of the identified schools that were, we believe are the highest need in terms of rebuilding. And then that's what you go and work with the city on, on advocating for.
As they should, as they should give us more money.
So those, and what it does is it goes from, we want to rebuild 12, and which we would like to do.
And, and we.
So now we want to rebuild four, and we're going to take care of all the envelope and air, everything else.
But we.
David, please make the point.
Yeah. You're, you're not going to be able to take the federal funds that are specifically aligned for clean air and use that to rebuild Maury. Like the, it's not going to jive. But you're, you're using it for its, for its intended purpose and you can take.
So we could rebuild three elementary schools or with, if we've got no more money from the city, and the city's been generous to us in the past with building schools, but it'd be the same. In other words, we could build a Maury or the three elementary schools.
Yeah, the three elementary schools, I mean, what, 52? I mean, you're.
That'd be 100.
Eighty, 80 million-ish between these, just the three elementary schools.
That'd be about 130, 140?
And from the city itself, right now, we're requesting over the next five years, 90. And so yes, you could, but, but then again, that, that would then take back your, your federal ESER funds, looking at 75 million. The ability to do those over two dozen, possibly more, you know, probably more in terms of the, all the envelope and air projects, that's based upon combining those two buckets of funds, your CIP and your ARP or ESER or whatever you want to call it.
So we wouldn't have the CIP left, it would all go here. But, but as each year comes, we get another bucket of CIP that would not be needed at the schools that are rebuilt.
You do. So what you're, what the trade-off would be is over the next five years then, you would have some schools rebuilt, some schools with the HVAC and envelope updates, but not all. Or you have the HVAC and envelope issues taken care of at your schools, and then you have to go out and, and push, advocate for those rebuilding.
Can I just say that I've been in schools that have had those things done in these old schools in the city, in the city, and it doesn't turn out to be a long-term solution for those buildings? Even a short, short kind of long-term solution, the work is often not well done. Let's look at renovating Granby and renovating Maury. And Granby's sitting over there pretty good and Maury is crumbling. They were both renovated. So it's not always equal unless somebody has a real sharp eye. And I know Mr. Fraley has a sharp, sharp eye, but still, that's a concern I have. When I look at taking that whole pot of money and putting it into renovating, we'll never ever get a discount of money again to build new schools. And our schools are so old, we need to start rebuilding schools. We got five new ones, you know, went into plan almost a decade ago, and that was the city that did that. So maybe they'll help us more. But that's just something I want in mind about where I stand on this. I want some new schools built. And if it's between Maury and three elementary schools, I would go with the elementary schools. Hopefully your plan where you would get the city going, and I, I'm guessing the city is ready to step in, especially as we close some of these little, really crumbling into the ground schools.
Right.
And return them back to the city, which would also give us a little bit more money because the city is now letting us have that money back.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Did you get your question answered?
Oh.
Did you get your question answered?
For that one question, I only get to ask one question.
I didn't realize you had more questions.
Well, I have a ton, but I went down to three.
Okay. Please proceed. Oh, Lauren.
Lauren, oh, put this closer to your mouth.
What?
We couldn't hear you very well down here.
Please proceed with your next question.
Okay. Thank you. The next one should be fast, anyway. That was my big question. The three elementary schools that are a priority.
Yes, ma'am.
And after I read all the information, they weren't my original priorities, but I saw what you were saying, so I'm in. My question is, and this is real quick.
Sure.
When we have rebuilt schools, the schools that, one of the things that's made it better is that they've had a large campus, so that their school continues in place while the building's going on.
Yes, ma'am.
The schools that don't have that have a struggle. We had one really nightmare situation with it, where they had to split the kids, and they were out of their neighborhood. So each of these schools, thinking about them in my mind, I think they have a big enough campus, but do they?
Granby Elementary.
The other, and that's.
In our opinion, we believe that.
Mr. Fraley, please come to the mic if you're speaking, because we can't hear.
Can I go back to your original question for a moment? When you're talking, there's three funding streams that we're discussing. The rebuilding schools comes from the city of Norfolk. Capital improvement comes from the city of Norfolk, but it's specifically designated to improve existing schools. And then the ESER funds are specific to HVAC, possibly windows, but we're not currently designating our funding stream to windows. We have so many schools that need HVAC ventilation upgrades. So there's three different streams, and you can't take CIP money to build new schools.
Right. I understand that.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
I was, what I was saying was that CIP money wouldn't have to go to a newly built school. It could now go to one of our other schools that need more improvements. That's what I was saying. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
And I would just state that we would have to have a commitment from the city of Norfolk for those rebuilds, and until we get that commitment, we are completely focused on, you know, working on 34 schools with the CIP plan and the ESER plan. And we're looking at 15 roofs, 30 HVAC upgrades to buildings, 19 window projects, and 24 door projects. So for seven schools, they will get the entire Big Four. For 13 schools, they will get three of the Big Four, you know, that we've discussed. And then the rest will get, many of them will get roof and HVAC, which in our opinion is the two critical components. So we're not waiting to find out what the city of Norfolk's gonna do as far as committing funds for rebuilds. We've got our fingers crossed we might get a Maury out of this deal, because Maury's in really bad condition. I'm just being forthcoming.
Right, and if the city were to rebuild Maury, that would solve, that would let us do something about our elementary and middle schools that are in such terrible, terrible shape.
Yes, ma'am. In the meantime, our aggressive nature is that we're putting a plan forward, which Dr. Birdsong will present to you all soon, that all of the schools that have a high FCI are going to be worked on in multiple capacities for multiple projects.
Thank you for some clarification there. All right, I said three, so I'll just ask one more. Okay, and this is another quick one. So what the city keeps asking us is for a plan, and a plan includes a timeline.
Right.
So, and when would you anticipate that we would have a timeline come to us to vote on? When would that be ready? You know, the clock keeps ticking, the time runs out on the money. What's, when will we know exactly what we're doing what year?
So that's a good question. The recommendation.
Oh, I know. I've sat through waiting when I was principal of a school that was supposed to be rebuilt in '08, and it wasn't even started until '15.
Right. So our intent is that this plan is the basis for that implementation plan, year by year. You see a high level of it in that one chart that showed the consolidations and so forth. The CIP then fits within that plan and specifies the individual schools in sequence based upon project-level logic of how you'd want and how Rick would want to most efficiently bundle projects within each of those buckets. So the facilities master plan provides the shell, the outside, the envelope, if you will, and then the CIP fits within it and specifies project buckets by year and time, and that's this summer.
So at the end of this summer, we should be looking at a plan that we could share, that the city would also be sharing, we could be sharing with them, that's gonna tell us that in 2022, 23, we're gonna make that move from Fairlon to Lake Taylor combined.
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna tell us, it's gonna tell us that we're gonna break ground on Granby Elementary School in this set, in other words, we're gonna have a timeline that's very precise so that we're not, this board isn't coming back together every year, revoting because we're not on our timeline.
Right. No, exactly right. It would have, thanks, Matt. And that's where this chart starts with that, and then the CIP builds with it. You have a couple unknowns with the rebuilds, what would be funded, what wouldn't, but there's a timeline to make that decision. We would have a floating chart in there that you insert based upon different trigger points in time, and you will have, by the end of this month, you will have the final report from us. This is the presentation for you. You'll have it with all of the sub-reports to date in an organized fashion with the timeline. And then I know the CIP is in development, and then that's being built with this in mind, and those are gonna merge here in the coming weeks to months.
Right. So by the end of the summer or the beginning of the new school year, I will have in my hand something that has a year date on every single school in this district.
You'll have the buckets from me at the end of this month. You'll have, you have it in here, and you'll have it splashed out with the CIP in the coming weeks to months. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And that's my three. Thank you for letting me do three, Dr. Martin.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. Three questions also. Just wanna make sure that everyone understands, when we see consolidation in this report, it basically means the closing of a facility.
One into another. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. Also, what savings are associated with the consolidations? So the four schools that were identified, I think, Todd Water Madison, Easton, and Lindenwood, what savings annually will we see by consolidating those schools?
That's a good operational accounting question, and I am not the person to answer that one in, from an operations standpoint. I'll see if Rick wants to speak to that or not. But the, I can tell you one thing for certain, is that your biggest impact right now is cost avoidance on your capital investment relative to the population there. And so what we want to avoid is, insofar as we can, spending limited capital dollars in relatively empty space. And so what, that's the biggest cost savings from a capital planning standpoint, is efficiency of capital investment. On cost, on the operational savings, I have different districts estimating different things over time, and there are some savings. It's typically not going to be Herculean, but there are some savings with some administrative positions and so forth. But you still have the kids, you still have the teachers, you've still gotta go somewhere, you still have all of those needs. You're not paying for the heating, cooling, cleaning, and maintenance of a building that is beyond repair. That is the biggest thing.
Right. I agree. But it still would be great to know what we're getting from making this decision.
Yes, and I think David has covered most of it. There is a little bit of staffing changes, but for the most part.
Not asking about staffing. I'm aware that that's not.
For the most part, the teachers follow the students, so there's not a lot of savings there. We, as David said, we wouldn't have the operational cost of the building that we'd be abandoning, and the cost of ordnance. We simply don't need to keep repairing that building.
Right.
Personnel is fairly small.
I'm not referring to personnel, anyway. I know that, I know that that's gonna be moved over somewhere else, so.
Yes, ma'am.
You hit where I am referring my question.
Okay.
In terms of where the expected savings will occur.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So my next question is, how would the roof replacements and windows improve our FCI? I think that's very important for us to know as well. So we're gonna spend X number of dollars on, you called it, envelope and air, and those things should change, if I understood your presentation correctly. Those things should change our SEIs.
Yes, ma'am.
On those buildings. So what is the to be on those so we can have a good idea of how we're spending our money? And these decisions, do they make sense in the grand scheme of things?
That's an excellent question, and something that I will make a note of to put in our final report by the end of this month will be a change in FCI post these investments. So once you, because it do substantially lower proportion to the cost of the investment, it lowers your FCI. I don't have that number in my head, but that is a very good question, and that is something I'll provide you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question based on that one. But wouldn't you need to also include a timeframe? Because that FCI will change over time.
Well, to be frank, the way that your FCI is currently calculated, it takes into perspective the long view, anyway. It's baked in all of those upcoming costs into the metric, and so we don't need to chase it every year. The only thing we need to do presently is to take out those deficiencies which you rectify. And so I think with, from Ms. Christine's question, once we address that, we'll have, you know, backing up those FCIs based upon these investments, you'll have a true picture of what they will be.
Ms., is that all?
That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and I do appreciate the questions already asked by my colleagues. This has been a very comprehensive presentation, very long awaited for this board. We've been having these discussions over and over again, as Ms. Campson had alluded to earlier. I agree with you, David. It is time to take action. Carpe Diem is definitely where we need to see ourselves. The stars are in alignment. We received a letter from the mayor and the city council with regards to the urge and the desire to help build new schools, and with the recommendations that have been presented before us, which includes two sets of facility condition index studies, the original one and the updated one, numerous community forums, a parent survey, albeit very, very small in the result sample, lots of planning and deliberation combined with our educational planning and wanting to keep schools safe, caring environments with an academic focus. I'm ready to take action on this. So my question really is to Dr. Birdsong, can we ask the administration to provide some type of a motion or a resolution for us to vote on for the June business meeting, for the July business meeting? Because I'm ready to send a clear message to city council and to our stakeholders, rebuild Maury, rebuild Granby Elementary, rebuild Norview, rebuild J Cox. These are the schools that we want to consolidate for phase one, and then we're gonna come right back to the drawing board to address the other items that you have mentioned. And all of this, again, is taking into consideration the fact that if the city grants us the ability to build these new schools, the ones that are currently in the CIP plan, like, for example, I saw J Cox is getting a plan for a new roof. We wouldn't need to do that if they're gonna get, if it's gonna get rebuilt. So time, looking at the timeline. So what are your thoughts on this, Dr. Birdsong? Help us to.
Dr. Gabriel, we'll talk about that. I don't wanna put her on the spot right now. I mean, I, we hear you.
And I'd like to get an opportunity to be a part of the discussion as well. Thank you.
This isn't the end of the discussion, so to ask Dr. Birdsong for an action item when not everybody's had a chance to talk yet, I think it's premature, so we're gonna table that for now.
Okay, well, let me rephrase it, then. Dr. Birdsong, do you support the recommend, Dr. Birdsong, do you support the recommendation that has been presented by the Cooperative Strategies Group?
So we've been working for quite some time since I was in the acting role, and we put a lot of time, effort, and energy into listening to the community, getting feedback, working with staff, listening to what the community wants. And we certainly, you know, as an administration, we're ready to move forward, because we do believe that not all of our children are in buildings that are worthy of them. And so we clearly are ready for any action that the board is ready to take.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Gabriel, are you finished?
Go ahead.
I appreciate what's been said thus far. I guess I wanna start with the premise of some of the things that have been said. So I know that you mentioned how, you know, fall of 2019 and moving from a school-by-school approach or a district-by-district approach to a division-wide approach. So I really have some deep concerns with the premise that you've established. So I think that the ed planning work that the board voted on and supported began in 2013. And I believe that what the board requested and supported was facilities that influence how facilities should support the education mission of the division, and that the objective of North Public Schools is clear, to move a system of quality diverse schools that promote high student achievement in the most equitable and cost-effective manner, and that the facilities piece of it is to support those academic outcomes and equitable goals that we established. And part of the reasons that we sought a firm to work with us, you know, I think we've had, I don't think it takes a lot of unique expertise or sole source indication to talk about FCIs and building buildings, and I support good buildings. I've seen what you all have done in Chesapeake, I've seen what you've done in Virginia Beach, but I think our goal has been very different than Chesapeake and Virginia Beach. But before I get too far away from the academic piece, I would like to come back to one of the more recent recommendations, when we were focused on student outcomes as relates to this process. So the board voted in April of 2019 to provide the Ingleside Elementary Attendance Zone choice between Norview Middle and Lake Taylor School. That was the vote, and I just want to put on the table again that I think it's important that we operationalize that decision that the board made. Going back to this recommendation, I think that what you've described has flipped the work on its head, that where we set out to try to focus on academic achievement and equity and providing, I'll say it this way, more access to diverse learning environments to support student achievement, where we did take action on such things as Lake Taylor School, Academy for Discovery, Southside STEM. These things were driven around student achievement with the facilities being able to support that student achievement. I think you always flipped it on its head, if I'm understanding your presentation correctly, where it sounds like, and from what I've read, the focus is on facilities, which I think is wonderful. And then after we take care of the facilities, somewhere six years, 10 years, whenever it may occur, we'll get around to programming and diversity and student achievement. I personally think that is backwards. I don't think that's what we've asked for. I feel like, you know, as I hear about unprecedented times and the opportunities that we have before us, and we talk about redevelopment and funding, to me, it sounds more like 1954, 1955 than it does 2021. Because when you look at your FCI, and you look at the years that a lot of schools were built, you'll see several schools that were built in the 1950s and the 1960s, many of them pocket schools. And they were built also with urban renewals. Todd Water Park built part of urban renewal, part of redevelopment. Lindenwood, a lot of these other schools. Because at that time, the goal was, we have these federal funds that are coming down, and we want to, at least those that were leading the process, wanted to forestall desegregation and wanted to maintain segregation. So they intentionally went about and built these schools. Rosemont was put into place for a reason. Todd Water Park was built for the segregated housing, public housing. If you go look at the Coronada School, all these little pocket schools, divisions, designs, what we were trying to do is be. what we were trying to do is be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community and move away from our 1954 massive resistance legacy towards a new model that would provide an opportunity to have attended zones and diversity and academic achievement with a strong building program to, to, to support that. And so, I'm not sure, for me personally, where, where things shifted. I'm all for fixing as many schools as, as possible. But to me, the focus still needs to be on the charge that we originally gave, the charge that we voted on continuously. I'm not aware when we voted to change the charge and, and be about the work that we, that we need. Even in some of the comments about after we do the master facilities plan, which, which confused me a little bit, because if you go look at the previous capital improvement plan that we have, in that capital improvement plan, it identifies maintenance, it identifies new construction. So, I'm not, I don't quite follow the concept that CIP funds don't support new construction. I think what probably is meant there is that CIP funds that have been designated for maintenance are intended to support, support maintenance. And then, the other thing I'll just say for now, is I know we'll talk about CIP and grant funds later. I don't think we've had a real good conversation about ESAR funds and how we're going to use those ESAR funds to support student achievement, and then also being able to talk about the allocation that supports facilities. In the $26 million that you calculated, I think that includes the $17 million in repurpose funds that we, that we had.
Yes, sir.
So, those repurpose funds, those funds, when we talk about reading specialists and math specialists and gifted resource teachers and music specialists and all the things that the board has said that it has valued over time, when those positions don't get filled, and those positions and other positions like that are intended to support student achievement, then in essence, what we have done and are doing is taking money that we, for whatever reason, did not expend as we intended to support students, and then shift that money to, to capital. And I just think we have to be very, very careful, because as a board and as a school division, we've said to the general assembly, we've said to the city council, we've said to our public, that North Public Schools need certain resources in order to support the academic needs of our children. And then, we fail to execute on those academic, fulfilling those academic needs. I mean, we could take money and change reading special salary to $100,000 if that's what it takes to get the reading specialists that we need. But when we make these arguments that we need money to support the operational and academic needs of the school division, and then we don't fulfill them, and then we set up a process where it's almost like we reward ourselves for not doing what we need for children in order to support buildings, I just think that is a deep conversation that we really need to have as a board moving forward, and why this approach is something that requires more discussion than just simply, thanks for the recommendations and let's go vote on something. But I, but I do support your, the goal of trying to have air in envelopes. I do support some of the other recommendations that are there, but I, I support them only in the context of we remain focused on the academic outcomes and the needs of children, and then how do we take the resources that we have for capital needs to support those student outcomes? And so, that's my thoughts for now, and I just wanted to share that with my colleagues and share that with you all as well. Thank you.
I just want to-
Thank you, Mr. Gort, uh, Ms. Jordan, if I may. I, I agree with the premise that, and in fact, I, I think that the warm, safe, cool, and dry facilities, clean air, clean envelope, and high-quality programs, these are parallel goods, parallel goals for our kids everywhere that I go. And there has been much discussion and often asked, what is the research that shows the correlation between facility investments and student achievement and outcomes? And you can find a lot of things, of course, as you can, anywhere for any topic on, when you Google. But there's some constant, which is clean air, enough ventilation, keeping that CO2 levels below 1,000 parts per million at, at most times throughout the building, if not all times throughout the day, so that our, our kids are, are operating at their highest level, that the building is free from damages of intrusion of water and what that does to air quality. And so, I do think that when we look at, when I approach a master facility, educational facilities master plan with school districts and look at it this way, I don't see these as so much as a cart and horse that need to be, put one in front of the other, but they're, they're, they're parallel. And when we look at a, a buildings where you have division-wide surplus capacity, well, it could be because of a decline in enrollment, which causes a resource strain on your buildings in order to be able to fund these programs at the high level for every kid, and you see where those are disproportionately impacting communities that have been economically disadvantaged for some of those intentional planning decisions that you mentioned of, of days of past that have disenfranchised communities, that the data itself bears out where those sore spots are, where those investments need to be made, and that when we do those investments to better resources our, our clean air, our clean buildings for our kids, that we have confidence in knowing that that is also a parallel academic improvement outcome in the making for, for those kids. And that absent, and, and that if we do not respond, the portfolio in capacity to, to the enrollment and the decline, we are going to be maintaining surplus that is going to be a drain on those funds that could go back into our teachers, into our students in the classroom. I take the philosophy that part of our job is to really align these strategic capital plans so that the most dollars that can be are in the classroom and are not taken out of a classroom to put into fixing up things that you are unsustainably resourced to maintain. So, I would, I would state that I believe strongly in the premise that we have to do both in parallel, that if one is significantly out of whack, out of balance, that the other will be impacted, and that when we look at some of these operational decisions, as you were talking about in terms of, you know, choice environment, school Ingleside and so forth, that you want to be able to make these choice from, from warm, safe, cool, and dry to warm, safe, cool, and dry. And if you can't always make that choice, the academic quest, the academic environments that those kids are going to be in are necessarily negatively impacted. So, I want to look at them as a both and rather than a one has to be before the other. And in the context, if I may, of my discuss, my, my framing of this as a division ride rather than piece by piece, was knowing that when, what we wanted to do was to, to take and state what comprehensively the investments need to be made to match the, the, the capital needs to what's going on to keep our buildings as a good, warm, safe, cool, and dry, educationally adequate choice for every kid, comprehensively for a five to 10-year window, advocate for that, knowing that when you achieve that, the operations, your, your choice of operations, how to operationalize that are, are radically different than if you don't have that baseline, and, and, and worse, frankly.
If, if I may, so I just want to be clear. I, I agree with you in the both and. Both and is what, what I, what I expected. What I'm saying to you is I think the both and has been lost. So, we stopped the work. We were doing work around both and, where we were looking at boundaries in academic programs and facilities. What I'm saying to you is what I'm reading and what I'm hearing is a shift has occurred. So, we've had a brand-new Monroe Elementary School, and then we've had redevelopment that has challenged inside of that building, inside of that new building. We have a brand-new Richard Bowen Elementary School.
Right.
We have a brand-new Southside STEM. But then, we take other actions that then stress what happens inside of the building. So, I'm saying to you-
Yeah.
-that the both and is where we started, and the both and is where I think we should-
Okay. I, I hear you. I hear you. And, and one last one, that I 100% agree that, that this does need to be a both and. And when it comes to phasing in the capital side of the equation, where I see these disconnects and these, these countervailing forces that you're talking about, we make this plan over here to improve equity and academic outcomes, then we make this plan over here that challenges that, that, that phenomenon happens when we don't take this all division-wide, what's our capital need, what are capacities, where are our kids going, how do we make sure that regardless of how we operationalize this, they're going to have a good choice from a warm, safe, cool, dry, educationally adequate perspective? Let's get that set. Let's look at what that, that's planned ahead for what that looks like from, from a capacity standpoint, from an investment standpoint. And with that plan, when we make those operational choices, we have it in a, in a cohesive, comprehensive plan that isn't going to easily allow for, you know, these, any sort of decisions down the road that would unintentionally undo what we've done, because we're looking at it as a whole to begin with. We've set that what we call portfolio-level planning, and then when we operationalize within a set portfolio plan, we can have continuity of operational planning, which is where we really look at this next phase in terms of, of the fall of this year on, is what are the operational implications of this facilities plan to make sure that we achieve our equity of and access goals to quality academic programs, diverse school environments and choice, and how that all works within an, a portfolio of schools that we can afford to sustain and afford to sustain at a high level. So, that, that is how I see it. It does take time, but I am, I've seen it work. I'm confident in it, and we're absolutely dedicated to making that whole equation work, Mr. Jordan. I guarantee you that. And it would, I appreciate the accountability on it, because it's, that's what we're here for at the end of the day.
Ms. Sein, did you have a response to Mr. Jordan? Or did you have a que, something in line?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
Did you have, um, was, you had your hand up, so is that in line with Mr. Jordan?
No, I just wanted to make sure you could see that I had my hand up.
I do have you on the list. I have Mr. Clanton ahead of you.
Oh, okay.
So, um, just want to make sure. Jordan, you good?
I, I, I will do, but I hope to continue the discussion.
Uh, Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. The, the late, great Whitney Young Jr., a fraternity brother of mine, once said that it's great to, one should prepare to have an opportunity and never have it, than to have an opportunity and not be prepared. And I think what we have here is an opportunity, and I think that even within the process of the educational planning that we had to wait, we're in a position now that because of this pandemic, I, I've said it several times before, that there's a silver lining in this, we, we've got some one-time funds, so a lot of things have really kind of aligned themselves to help us do, do the most good, I guess, in some respect for our kids. I mean, I, you know, and also just kind of using the, what Mr. Jordan had said from the 2013 resolution from this board, which I wasn't present here for, but quote, "most equitable and most cost-effective means." And I think that what we've gotten is a plan that does just that. I've gone through, I've looked at this. We went from 12 schools, which, to be perfectly honest, which was pie in the sky. We were not going to get that. If that was the case, we would have had that done a long time ago. We did get five schools with the unsolicited proposal that came to us. But I agree in the respect of what Ms. Campson and others have said. Council sent us a letter. They've init, uh, the mayor and others have identified to us that we want to partner with you to get these schools built. Give us a plan. Tell us what you want to have done. And I think that you've given us that. You've given us Maury High School, which we know is in total disrepair, and we need to do, take action on that. But then, we also have elementary schools. But when we kind of look at it, providing that safe, secure environment, just like you said, the data goes back to it in the respect of making sure that our kids have an environment that they can come in. It's the same thing. And Ms. Campson, you could probably talk about it in respect that being in the classroom, that a child can't learn if they're hungry. Well, it's the same thing. If the child has to be distracted or they're disturbed in the respect if they're leaking roofs and all these other things that are happening, that disrupts the learning process. So, I think that we have one-time dollars, and I think in the respect, these are federal dollars that are, and, and, you know, and I do believe, Mr. Jordan, we do need to have an additional conversation as a board. Do you kind of break that down for us as to what that looks like? But I think that we have a plan that's here for us that allow us to do that. Now, I don't disagree in the respect that we have to look at breaking up some of the, the really, the, I would say, the ills of our past-
Yeah.
-which have really segregated, and, and it's, it's there. We have segregated schools and communities and so forth, and so I don't believe that we have to, that we should be ignoring it. And I do believe that we have to come back to that at some particular point. But I also believe that that is a responsibility when we start talking about how we're academically educating our students, how we're doing all those things. This is what we hire a superintendent and an administration for, to work on the academic component there. So, the educational planning really kind of goes in there, what we're doing academically in the, in the classroom, to match up with making sure that we have facilities that will support that. I brought before this board, I mean, my colleagues, about the invest, looking at and exploring academic career academies within our high schools and changing how we've done some things. We had that there. You know, I still see CTE High School in here, but that's because that was original. But to be perfectly honest, and for anyone who's watching that, we don't have the funding for it. We can't get the funding even from the state level to get that done. So, we've got to reassess, and I think that you're giving us a plan and a timeline that we can come back as a board to say and to signal the council that we've got funding that are coming from the federal government through all these other things that will allow us to do the most good right now, that will affect many different students across the division, and allow us to come back and identify what you have given us. And I just think that this board, at some particular point, we have to say, yes, we agree with that recommendation, and whether or not we're saying, you know, it's this amount of money or whatever, I think that we have to in some fashion to, to counsel, but to the community, that this board is willing to take action. I just hate for us to go back into this posturing, as I can put it, in the respect of not doing and taking action. The last time we had a, you know, we, we saw what happened when we had PPE, well, the, I think it was FB ballot that came with us with their proposal, and we got schools built. But this is a time right now that we can put roofs on buildings, we can replace doors, windows, and HVAC. I know several schools within my ward alone who have issues with HVAC and getting clean, fresh air within those classrooms to, not only for our students, but for our staff. So, I think that that's a, a thing that we should be doing. And I'm, if I was hearing from Dr. Gabriel, she was trying to get clarity, and I will ask upon information, Dr. Martin, from you, when you said we will talk about this, when are we going to talk about-
I was telling her that we're not at a point to have any-
You just wanted to get all the conversations.
Action steps, yes.
Got it.
So, that was pretty much sure of what I-
Appreciate it. Okay. But I, I think that some point, we have to, we got to take some action. And I, I appreciate this. I've listened for the time that I've been on the board, you know, what we had to do, that we're moving some things. And I think that there's a lot of other things that when we get to our next conversation and talk about capital improvement, that they're aligned. And I also want to caution us, and I just want to get clarity on this, about the reserve funds or the extra, I think the $17 million. Is that money that's already recurring in the budget, or is that one-time funding?
So, the $17.7 million, those are reversion funds-
Mm-hmm.
-separate from CIP.
Uh-huh.
Those are, that's funding that was left over from 1819 and 1920 that the city re-appropriated to us, to the school division.
Essentially, our, okay, we, our students are virtual, and so we did have some savings and things out of that, and then also some positions that weren't filled, correct?
Savings, yes, as a result of a variety of things, but mostly, yes.
But we voted on a budget, an operations budget, that did have, that has the positions, that does have the roles that are in there. So, are we cutting positions? How many positions that we cut, I guess? I guess for me, what I'm trying to understand is-
Of not cutting.
I know I heard the $17 point, you know, million dollars, and Mr. Jordan had put this on the ta, on the floor here. I don't want to take anything away from the education within the classroom, but I think that what I'm hearing, even from the budget that we approved, that, that we were laser-like focused on that, on that we do have some additional dollars that will help us to be able to take care of some of these other things in place. And I don't want us to be in a position, well, if it's one-time dollars, and we're not necessarily, because we- because we got an increase in our budget, correct?
We did.
So aren't we covering those positions and those roles?
We are.
In our budget currently, right now?
I recommend it to the board, what I believe the administration needed to ensure that we are able to have positive student outcomes at the end of the year.
So the administration has made a recommendation in the budget and we approve that operational budget, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this additional 17 million dollars, in my respect there, is not affecting the academic success at this particular point. But if we are given a proposal to be able to do something else to support other areas that are going to still support the academic success of our students, then we should move forward with that. And so I'm not going to take any more time, Dr. Martin. But just, you know, laying it out there in respect, I think we need to take action at some particular point. And I will support some action from this board to send a strong message to council that we're willing to work as partners because they are the decision makers when it comes to building these buildings. But most importantly, to our staff, our parents and our community, that as a board, we're willing to move forward to take some action. And I don't disagree that we have to also look at the bigger picture that Mr. Jordan said from 2013. But I think that right now we have a unique opportunity to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Right. But I think there's a piece of clarity that's missing from this conversation when we talk about these reversion funds because we did ask City Council to fully fund our CIP request at 17 million and they did not.
Correct.
They, because those reversion funds are not CIP money. They could go to positions and other things that needs in our schools.
Yeah, I'm not saying that they were CIP.
Over time, somehow that has been assumed because the city doesn't, has a history of not funding our CIP request. They have somehow in their minds designated it as CIP funds. But that is not necessarily what they are. They only allocated 10 of the 17 million and 1 million of that is going to buses. So that leaves us with $9 million. And I just want to be clear on that because I think that it's getting skewed in the conversation that, you know, that money, of course, and again, when we go back to the either or, CIP or services to our children, it's not that those services were somehow, that money was hoarded, so we would have leftover money. Those, you know, there's a lot of reasons, you know, why positions unfilled, dot, dot, dot. That's an easy one to go to. But there are a lot of reasons why that money just ended up not being funded as projected, you know, a year ago.
So the SWIFT funds, so the SWIFT funds that we got, which I think was 15 million dollars, which we were given an option in the height of the pandemic. Counsel said either if we had a potential budget shortfall, that we could utilize that 15 million dollars to either cover that gap or we could use it, I think it was either operations, or we could use it to capital improvement. And I think that is that not a part of that 17 million that I think is still sitting there? Because we didn't use those dollars, did we?
At this point, I believe the city, within their CIP, they have allocated SWIFT funding to Norfolk Public Schools for the next, I believe, four years at, is it 6 million or 5? I know it's 3, I think it's 6.
So that's what they're breaking that up through that one. Okay. And then the other thing, Dr. Martin, that I'm missing, and I brought this up to council, I guess maybe over a year ago with this whole casino land deal, designated on their side that 5 million would go to Brookertie, Washington, another 5 million would go to Maury High School. And I don't see that reflected here because it's not really, but I would like to send a message that, you know, from the administration or whatever else, so that we can find out what the status is of that. Because I think that that needs to be added into the equation.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought that would be from the revenues based from the tax revenues from the casino. And of course, the casino hasn't been built yet.
I thought it was land sales. They designated.
The land sale?
Yeah. That it was supposed to be 5 million designated to both. But I think it still needs to be a part of the overall discussion.
Right, absolutely.
Yep.
Ms. Bassin is up next. She's been very patiently waiting. And then Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So I want to be clear that my comments are taken in the spirit that they're meant to be taken in. They are coming from the perspective of someone who was on the original DeJong Richter Steering Committee, one who has sat in this board room as a community member for many of the discussions around educational planning. And as you know, I have listened and observed in all of the community meetings that you all have hosted via Zoom, via in-person, you know, in, over the last two years. And so I'm frankly, I feel disappointed in the recommendations that are coming forward and in large part because one of the main overarching goal of this work back in 2013, when it began, was to create socio-economically diverse schools. And over time, that mission over three administrations now, three school board configurations, has been diminished. And just as our facilities, where we learn matters, who we are learning with matters as well. And there's clear and mounting research on the benefits, the academic, the social benefits of being in socio-economically diverse schools. We see it year after year in our academic data here. And decades ago, we saw the impact of what integration had on closing academic achievement gaps. And yet here we are at this unprecedented moment, as you said, not only with, in terms of the funding, but in terms of the recognition of all the inequities, the deep, deep inequities that exist in our society from a health perspective, from an education perspective, from an opportunity, you name it, from nearly every perspective. And for us to not only take action on the buildings, to not take action on the student composition of our, of our school buildings, to me is a incredible disservice to our students and to our community. And with that, I'm extremely disappointed in the recommendations that have come forward because I know that cooperative strategies had, has heard, you know, members of the school board and members of the community say, what about desegregating our schools? Right? Am I, am I correct on that? I mean, I know that has come through in the community conversations that I have heard and witnessed time and time again, and board members have discussed time and time again in this boardroom and in those community meetings. And so to come forward with a recommendation that does not address boundary changes in addition to facilities indicates that the job has not been done. And I'm very disappointed in that. And while, and I think it's unfortunate, given that our students right now are in crumbling buildings and we need to address that. But we also, we, I also feel like we're in a crumbling society and we need to address that too. And so my, this has not met my expectations. And I, you know, I mean that in the spirit, as I said, in the spirit of someone who for the last decade has been involved in these discussions in this city. And yes, I know the City Council has made a commitment to building new schools. But one of the things over the years that in our joint meetings that we have also tried to express is a joint vision for a proudly diverse city and a proudly diverse school system. And we have nowhere near addressed that. And so that is something that while we are asking the city to support our building infrastructure, we need to be asking them to also support desegregating our neighborhoods and our schools. And that has to be part of this picture. And so, you know, as far, as far as comments go, I have lots of questions about the recommendations that have been made. But to me right now, that is what is sitting uneasy with me is the lack of attention on that piece, including with all the considerations that have been listed up there in this planning work. Creating socioeconomic diversity is an afterthought and was not a critical component of the considerations. If it had been, I think we would have a very different picture. That would, that could still address building infrastructure, but while also addressing equitable access to programming and opportunities. So with that.
Yeah, so I have a question for you all. So is there a way, since we know the demographics of the schools that you're recommending for consolidation, is there, on your final report, can you also add a socioeconomic percentage, like how, and also a demographic indicator? Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
So let me be very clear. As we've done this work, we have certainly looked at ensuring that we were not creating schools that had a higher SES than they already have. I think Dave and Matt will clearly say to you, anytime they brought forth a recommendation to me and it resulted in having schools that had a, that have a higher SES, I automatically shut that down. And I think they can share that with you right now. So to say that we have not focused on that, that is not true because we have had many conversations around that and we've done planning around that. To the extent, if you look at the scenario for Lindenwood Elementary School, while we have given you some recommendations around what it could look like if we were to consolidate those schools, you have the ED, the economically disadvantaged percentages right there so that you could have that information. So as the board is working, you can make decisions around, no, we can't, we're not going to move in this direction because we don't want to increase, you know, the poverty level in the school. So to say that we haven't done that is not true. And I need that to be stated for the record.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong, for clarification.
If I may as well, you know, I, Ms. Bassin, I will agree with you that the work is not done. 100%. And that is part of what I have come and observed to be a good order of planning, that we want to make sure that the portfolio of schools is sustainably resourced from both your operating budget and your capacity budget so that you can sustain the decisions that you make on boundaries and feeders and choice are made within the brick and mortar that you can sustain at a high level for the foreseeable future and then some. And when you have that portfolio set, it has been something that we have, I haven't tried to repeat in our steering committee meetings and community dialogues, that when you move forward with this plan and you're making those investments and you have those isolated consolidations to improve your efficiency so you can put more dollars in the classroom and so forth, that you absolutely need to follow that with the same level of attention to planning for how to equitably access and populate those schools from both a boundary and a choice perspective. And that, Matt is very good at what he does and he could draw boundaries up all day. But we could not, in the process of doing a portfolio plan, do the same level of diligence on the boundary feeder, choice planning with your community that we're doing presently and are wrapping up with the facility side. One would suffer. And that we want to make sure that as we do that, that planning, that operationalizing your schools to meet your diversity and your academic access goals, that you're doing it in that sustainable portfolio. So I agree with you. The work is not done. I have seen where divisions, not, you know, other folks I've worked with, will make an academic plan and then follow it with a capital plan and then that school now needs to be consolidated or it's not the right fit because the portfolio wasn't set. And it is my honest intention and has been is to do it in a sequential fashion, not delay, but my intent, and I'm honored to recently, you know, we, when in the next procurement here, is to move forward with those considerations front and center to start with an Educational Futures Conference, with conferencing and visioning of what do we want our schools to look like, to build off of the visioning work that you've done in the past since 2013, to build off of all of those engagements and to then, to set the standards for our choice programming, for our boundaries and then in diversity targets. And then to apply this level of diligence with your steering committee and your community towards those ends to feed and support your portfolio plan. And by this time, when I meet, hopefully next summer, the plan, as we've laid it out, is to come with, to you with those consolidations that are listed in there, with the plans to meet these targets in those areas with the kind of feedback that you see on the capital side for those particular targets.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, and then Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Bassin.
Yeah, I just wanted to, one of the advantages and one of the reasons that we had a recommendation to hire a consulting firm is that we could yell and say whatever we wanted to at the consulting firm and not yell at our, albeit preceded we're yelling at our staff and our administration. So there's a reason why I directed my comments to you. So I don't want there to be any intent that somehow it was directed elsewhere. But I would also like to say that since the Lindenwood scenario was mentioned, that's not new. We've had the Lindenwood scenario. We've had the pairing scenario. We've looked at scenarios. I just want to talk about, since we've been talking a lot about the board's vision and goals, et cetera. And I know my colleague, Mr. Clanton, mentioned the 2013 resolution. I was not specifically there. I was talking about the work over time. So some of what the board has worked on. We worked together when we were setting goals for, during our superintendent search. And we included in there goals around and expectations around socioeconomic diversity. We established agreement around socioeconomic diversity over time and it has sustained itself to whenever we come up with our new mission and goals as we work on our new strategic plan. That's been voted on consistently and approved consistently. We went through all this work and we were talking about the master milestones and 70% goals. And we said 70% because that was the district average because we knew that if we talked about 50% or anything other than that, everybody would fold. And so at the, for me, at the end of the day, I think that most of the individuals in this room, where they have opportunities for their own children or for their loved ones, find non-hyper-poverty racially-isolated schools for their children. I think our council members find ways of doing that. I think a lot of our policymakers find ways of doing that. And for me, the reason why I'm so, one of the reasons why I'm so adamant about that is, you know, I did that for my own children. And I just felt as a school board member, that one of the reasons that I chose to serve was not to offer the city's children something less that I wanted for my own children. I actually wanted the city children to have something more than what I was willing to provide to my own children. I'll never back down on that and I'm going to stay consistent with that. And I think that's something that we need to be able to have those tough conversations about. And the board can reaffirm, if the board wants to back off, whatever the board wants to do, the board can do that. But up to this point, what I was trying to say is I think the board, all the boards, all the configurations of the boards have been quite consistent around our goals. And that was the point that I was driving at, where I felt the shift occurred. I don't think that the shift occurred at the board level. I think the shift occurred someplace else. And then just to go back for a moment, and maybe we'll talk about it some more with the CIP stuff. But I think we're all over the map in terms of what resources we have and what they were allocated for. The SWIFT money, we had 30 million. We could have used it for this and we used it for that, the repurpose. I think we really need to get a good handle on those resources and how they work. But again, I'm just saying to my colleagues that, you know, we talk about equity. Last year, we passed resolutions, you know, about George Floyd. We have meetings and conversations about implicit biases and all these things. What typically happens, school divisions, municipalities across our country, when it really comes time to make. when it really comes time to make tough decisions for the benefit of all, oftentimes the, the children who have historically been denied the opportunities continue to be denied the opportunities. And that's, I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, whatever, that occurs. And what I felt that our community has called for, what I felt I heard in listening sessions is, yeah, warm, safe, and all the things that you talked about. But also these other values that, that we established, including some guardrails that talked about not doing anything that would continue systemic racism. And so we're all victims of that systemic racism, whether we are, whether it's internalized or not, whether or not we understand it or not. And I just wanted to drive home, as I'll say again in closing, is that part of what we're dealing with is trying to operate in your envelope that you've described, in systemic racism that exists today. And so if we want to be intentional about providing something different and dismantling institutional racism as we talk about, then we have to be dedicated and, and committed to that work. And it might take 50 years, just as if we've sustained what we've sustained for 50 years. But you can't back off of it every time it gets a little, a little tough. And usually what happens in a conversation is, the minute you say something about it, someone will say, well, are you ready for that? Don't you think a certain group of people will leave or, or get upset? And so it goes right back to the adult behavior and not dealing with the student. So, thank you.
Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Sure, I'll just, I'll touch on two points. The first point is the reversion funds. I remember when I first came on the board, they used to call it cost savings, and I, I didn't like that. I didn't like it when they called it cost savings because I never thought that it was a savings when you couldn't fill a position that was very much needed, a reading specialist, a math specialist. But I do know that our superintendent has invested strategically on creating cohort groups within our division so that she can fill those positions that have gone unfilled repeatedly. There's a teacher shortage out there, there's a nursing shortage out there, there are shortages everywhere. And so I want to applaud her for at least taking some forward steps to try to grow our own entities. Because, Mr. Jordan, you're right, we, we don't ever want to go to the state and say, we need these items, and then not have them filled. And then, you know, we, because the funds are theoretically left over, then we're investing them into our capital needs. Well, that is what it is. I would love to put that money back into the person that is interacting with the child. So let's just be clear, our superintendent is identifying ways so that we don't find ourselves in that position. Number two, I really can appreciate the thought of the conversation that we're having right now as a bigger picture item, not just here are some funds that have been presented to us, but how do we want to identify and deal with the ills of the past? As Mr. Clanton has said, systemic racism, segregated schools, there's, there's no denying that. And I am still 100% committed to that work. However, we have a golden opportunity right here. We have the opportunity to reach out to our city council member counterparts who have said to us, we want to partner with you to build schools. If any of you all do not agree that Maury High School is a safety risk for our staff and students, say it now. Because right now, our students and staff are not in a place where one day they could walk in and literally have the ceiling come down on them, as it did during an event. And if we need to do this by piecemeal, then so be it. But we can take the big picture in conversation and work with our governance trainers. We can work with Dr. Birdsong and the Strategic Planning Group that she had. We can identify those zoning changes. But I think we do need to address the capital needs of our buildings. Because if the buildings aren't safe, warm, and dry, then we have a serious issue on our hands, both for our students and our staff. So I would please encourage this board to consider adopting some type of a resolution that we can state to our stakeholders, our staff, our neighbors, our community members, everyone, that we are committed to at least developing some type of a plan that identifies schools that need to be rebuilt, schools that will be consolidated and closed, as Ms. Smith had said, let's understand the terminology correctly. And, and then work on the next phase. I'm, I'm all in for it. The money is here right now before us. If we waste our time and have paralysis by analysis, they will take it from us. We will have schools that do not have the specifications that we want, and it'll be looking back in the rearview mirror. So let's, let's collectively work on this, let's send a clear message, let's give the superintendent some direction, as it is our job as the board, and do what's right, and use these funds for the greater good.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Not sure who to address this comment to, but it's in support of something or in addition to something Mr. Clanton said earlier. I think now it's also an opportune time to revisit discussions with city council that focus on these buildings that we are consolidating and potentially will turn over to them. And having some type of cost-sharing agreement with them from the sale of those facilities or land as well. As we all know, the pandemic has created a shift in the construction market, and especially with housing, land values are going up. My vehicle value went up when it depreciates in value, but for some reason, my property taxes are higher now. So a lot of things are happening outside of the norm. We don't know how long this is going to last. But I think as a district, we need to try to capitalize on these types of things that are occurring as much as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Basine?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. And to be clear, my comments earlier were not to say that building infrastructure shouldn't be taken care of, such as Maury High School. Absolutely not. That is a priority project. And to that end, I'll lead into my questions that I have. So based on the timeline that you had provided about when those rebuilds would occur, is it, is it safe to say then a Maury rebuild would occur in the 20, I think it was 2025, '26 school year?
It depends. I, I, I'll be honest, when it comes to timing of when you would build projects for, that you don't have funds allocated for, the timing gets squishy.
Yeah.
And where I was doing that estimate in time was to look at that it really should be, I would recommend that over this next year, you make that determination about what you're going to advocate for. Maybe it's a week's long decision, you go, yep, that's easy. Maybe it takes six months, I don't know. But sometime in this upcoming school year to make that decision so that those schools that you would decide not to rebuild, and then have, you, you could have some, have time to work with the city to get some, some direction about what the probability of these are, that those that aren't probable or aren't going to happen have time to go back into your CIP plan and use those federal funds before they expire to take care of their envelope and area issues. So that was the rationale for the timing. As to when they would be rebuilt, that was more of a swag on determining if it took one full year to make that determination with the city, because it would have to be that dialogue, right? Then those, you would start in 2022, '23 school year to then start to build the financing plans, if not already a little bit before then, about how you're going to fund these things, which at that point, you should begin the prioritization, planning about in what sequence, what makes order from a swing space perspective, what makes order from, you know, the sense and urgency of need. And, and then as the funds are secured, of course, basically saying that you would be looking at probably construction starting absolutely no earlier than 2023, probably more like 2024 on, considering the funding would need to be secured, and then all the procurement design, et cetera.
Okay. All right, thank you. And my next question is related to a question Ms. Smith had asked earlier on. So if all the, if the work to envelope, as you said, you know, all of these schools, the FCI goes down, do you have projected FCIs should that work occur? And, you know, I think, you know, piggybacking on the question that she had, you know, I'd like to know, then what timeframe? Like a school like Sherwood Forest, for instance, that's currently, I think, within the five-year plan. You know, how far down does that FCI go? And where does that put us for a future renovation or rebuild?
Absolutely. And that, and that was a fantastic suggestion earlier, and we will provide that analysis. It won't be terribly difficult, but we will provide that. And just like we had in the options development, a red light, red, or green light, kind of light there on, on when we think it needs to be rebuilt, zero to five years, six to 10 plus. We'll do the same with those revised FCIs because it's going to, it's going to matter both on, again, that sort of quantitative measure of the FCI and the impact, as well as in what years we anticipate those needs to come, be it, you know, six to 10, 10 to 15, so on and so forth. And what they are, what those deficiencies would be remaining after these investments. So we will take a comprehensive refresh of that to give you that longer view. And we'll have that by the end of the month.
Okay. All right, thank you. And last quick question. So I know in a lot of the discussions, there was, I thought the recommendation around Madison was to move it to Coronado. And so I was surprised to see Rosemont as the recommended site.
Yes, that was one of the changes in discussion with leadership, division leadership, where we proposed that idea, and then it was a nope, that is not a building that we want kids in. We could possibly think about it for adults later on, but do not think it's suitable for kids. And so we amended our original option idea. And then looked at with, with division leadership, where would you have the capacity that could be separated, so you could have separate, you know, programs operating in that building? And with sufficient capacity for all, and that's where Rosemont came in.
Dr. Birdsong, did you have something to add?
I was just going to agree with that. We did have an in-depth discussion about that. And I have grave concerns about moving children out of Madison into another building where we've taken children out of. I think our children deserve much better than that.
Thank you.
That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good.
All right, well, thank you all so much, and thank you to my colleagues for this really good conversation. You know, very tough questions. And I think, you know, I echo Dr. Gabriel, it's time to decide. And so I just need some clarification on what we will be voting on. I'm looking at the recommendations on Slide 5. Is that, is that all that we will be expected to vote, vote on at the next meeting?
That's a good question, Dr. Martin. And this is, of course, a, a high-level PowerPoint presentation. In, in the report, what we'll do is we'll add together these rebuilds and consolidations on, on 5 with the list of all the recommendations for those different Esser investments that you see towards the end of this, which start on page, hold on, please, 16. And so the, the sum of those parts equal the recommendations for the next five years. And then that's where the funding, the funding that we see in the charts are tied to it. So we'll make that crystal clear in our report by the end of the month.
Dr. Martin, just for clarity then, so the, I thought I, I read where the intent was to come back in July with a formal plan, and then that would be the time that we would be asking to adopt or vote on that plan. Is that, did I read that correctly?
Well, I, I just looked at the 16th, and it has it on their, on the decision discussion agenda. So I'm just wanting to know, are we expected? I, I didn't realize it was there, but did?
I thought the 16th was for the, the next agenda item with the capital improvement plan.
Well, it's listed as educational planning right now, so maybe that's going to change then.
I'm just asking, am I reading
Yeah.
what the recommendation was coming from the administration correctly? That you wanted to bring us a five-year capital plan or facilities plan, whatever it's being called, in July? Did I read that correctly?
So for the June meeting, we were hoping to get a, a vote related to the CIP that Mr. Jenkins will be presenting tonight. And then certainly during the retreat, I, I thought that there was a discussion about us having a more comprehensive conversation around five-year CIP. And so that's where, that is my understanding of the direction that we were going.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, we need to change.
Madam Chair, if more comprehensive in July, and with what action? Because, I mean, I know we're going to have a discussion, is it discussion action? What, what's that looking at?
We'll have a discussion, and then we'll, we'll vote on what comes out of that discussion moving forward. So that, I mean, I don't, we?
I'm just trying to build it.
Once we have their report, we haven't asked for anything else at this time, so that'll be discussed. And, you know, we're going to hear from Mr. Jenkins in a minute, and?
Yeah, I heard that, so CIP in our next board meeting, and then I heard we're going to talk about the educational plan in July. Discussion, is it discussion action? Are we, are we looking to take action on what's being presented to us? Or, I mean, that could be to delay it or whatever, but I'm saying there should be?
Well, if we, I mean, depending on the discussion, I would hope that we could take action at the, you know, at the end of July at the business meeting.
Okay.
So you're saying that we will be voting in July at the business meeting? Okay.
I would like to, yes.
Yeah, me too, that's why I was wondering, it's time to, it's time to get moving.
I wouldn't push it out any longer than that.
Well, the reason why I was raising is that I didn't think this was the final product, correct?
No, this is your, this is your presentation for tonight. The final product will be the summary of all the work to date.
Right. And we'll get that when?
By the end of this month.
Okay, so we'll have plenty of time to review it and ask questions and stuff?
Ma'am. But these recommendations aren't going to change?
No, no, sir. The, what will happen is the recommendations will be put into a more of a formal report, for a written report kind of format, as opposed to this presentational format. It will include with it the, more of the detailed results of these community dialogues, notes from the steering committee meetings and those kinds of things, and a summary. So it kind of builds more of the, the details behind it, rather than just the high level. Here are the recommendations, and here's the big picture why.
So with that being said, Madam Chair, then I would almost ask that when that report comes in, that there should be some type of recommendation to the board so that we can, as far as the recommendation coming from the plan, coming from the administration, for the board's place consideration. And then we look at that particular recommendation, if we need to modify it or whatever else, or vote on it as is, then we can keep things moving.
I believe that's the?
Okay, yeah, I think that we're saying the same thing.
Cool, okay.
Mr. Jordan, did you have something else?
Yeah, just, just one, one point of clarity. So in, in, in that final document, will it show the, the live-in data, the dots, all the things that we've, that we saw in the last big
Yes, sir.
report? It'll have all, all that information in there?
All of that will be in there, yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate all of the, the listening and organizing of the community engagement piece. That was, I sat in on one as well, and, and I, and I think our, our community appreciates being included as well. So thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Jenkins. I believe he's going to present the CIP plan. Please proceed.
Yes, good evening, Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan.
I can't.
Okay, can you hear me okay now?
I can.
You can? Okay. Good evening, Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, and Superintendent Birdsong. I'll talk to you a bit about our capital improvement plan for the coming year. This is, this is just for the first year. As has been mentioned already in the meeting before, in July, we plan on a five-year presentation, a plan for five years. So Karen, if you can go to the next slide. Tonight, we will talk about, again, building envelopes, which we've spoken about. The previous speaker spoke about. Again, that deals with roofs, windows, and doors primarily. Will this, the recommendations to you for the coming year are based on the master facility plan or the draft that was just discussed. And the use, we'll talk about the use of capital funds and, and the reversion funds. If you go to the next slide, you can see that for the coming year, for the cap, the city capital, CIP funding, we had asked for 17 million. That included nine mil, 16 million, excuse me, for capital improvements, and a million for school buses. The city council actually appropriated nine million for capital improvements, or deferred maintenance, I should say, and a thousand, excuse me, a million dollars for, for buses. So we have a $7 million gap. In addition to that, we have the reversion funds, which we just, was discussed at length today. We had requested 17 million, 712, and council did appro, uh, did appropriate that amount of funds. So moving to the next slide, we have the $7 million gap, and actually, it's a little larger, and we'll, we'll discuss that as well. So for the capital projects, this is a 17 million, not the reversion funds. For the next couple of slides, I think it's on two slides, yes, you can see in one column the amount that was requested for each project, and how much we would allocate of the city appropriation that was approved last month. So for the school bus replacements, we had requested a million, and this, and we would also recommend that we spend a million dollars to replace school buses. The plan also included five and a half million dollars to do roofing repairs, or actually a replacement of the roof at Booker T. Washington. And our recommendation to you now is to use reversion funds. So that would not be funded with the capital improvement or deferred maintenance funds, because there just aren't enough of them. The roof replacement at Ocean Air and at Ingleside are both, we recommend that those proceed. However, we have some cost increases. The estimates that we had provided to you were based on the draft of the master facility plan. And as we go into design, we're finding that the, those estimates are old, and that the current pricing is significantly greater, and/or the conditions of the building or, or of the roof are so bad that it's going to cost more. So for Ocean Air, we had estimated a million, 107. We're now estimating two and a half million. For Ingleside, the amount that we had planned in March, and that you had approved, was a million, 36,000. And you can see that is almost 2.4 million now. So I think, again, based on conditions and the change in the, and just the top, part of it's updating the costs for time. The heating and cooling that was recommended for J Cox Elementary, that was recommended in early March, before we even were aware of the Esser funds from, for the, coming from the American Rescue Plan. So because we can use funds in the American Rescue Plan, and also in the, um, the second phase of Esser for heating and cooling improvements, we're recommending that that amount, the, the million, 314, be moved to the CRS A funds, which is Esser 2. Doors and windows at Calcot, a million, 123 was in the original plan, we recommend that that stay. Doors and windows at Laramore, we had a million, 130, excuse me, a million, 333,000. We recommend those be moved to the reversion account. Turning to, so, uh, the total, 17 million was requested. What we're recommending are projects that total $10 million. There are fewer projects, there's less money, and also there have been changes or updates in their estimated costs. And I should also point out that our costs are still estimates. Design work has been done on, basically, this point, one building. Some design work, I think, has been done on a second building. And we would still need to go through the procurement stage. And the actual cost is really gonna be based on market conditions, in addition to the work that needs to be done on the school. Now, if we move to the reversion funds on the next slide. And this, I'm sorry, isn't divided into three slides, so that you can read it, hopefully. In the March proposal, we had recommended some work on the interior at Berkeley Campus Stella Early Childhood Center. We are now recommending that that project be delayed. And I'll say that the only reason we're recommending that projects be delayed is because of adequacy of funding. It's not that the project is not important, but it's not the most important. So we're recommending delay of that. The same thing on the ceilings or interior work at Little Creek Elementary School. We had budgeted 171,000, so we were recommending to, to delay that. Airline Elementary Doors, again, a small, a relatively small project that we are now recommending that we delay. Azalea Gardens Middle School, just a small change in the price, but we would recommend that that stay in the project, excuse me, in the plan for the reversion funds. Whereas the doors at Northside Tech Center, the electrical systems at Willard, and the Ingleside Elementary Windows, that those project would, projects would be delayed. And if, I can also, when we say delayed, they're not being delayed forever. We, next, next month, we will come to you with a five-year plan. And I think most, all of these projects will be in the five-year plan. They simply aren't in fiscal '22. And then the last item on the first slide of reversions is the Sherwood Elementary School. The windows, we recommend that project proceed. That school is getting, there's roof work that will be starting on that project in the coming months. And it would make sense to take care of the windows as well. On the second slide of the reversion, we're also recommending delays for windows at Lake Taylor, Northside Middle, and the Tech Center. And those are all projects that were originally, both the first slide and the first three items on this slide, were all items that were planned in fiscal '21, or that were requested in '21. But when the budget was cut, these items had been delayed. The next group of projects are actually new projects for fiscal '22. They, they were not in a previous plan. And here, again, we're recommending that some be delayed. The Chesterfield School Roof would be delayed. The Ingleside Doors and Flooring would be delayed, along with the roof and exterior walls at PB Young. The Willoughby Early Childhood Center Doors and Windows, we have an update on the price, and we're recommending that that go forward. Turning to slide three. We had Wash, uh, windows for Washington High School at 2,142. We can, we can still do some windows, but it's gonna have to be phased in, so we're recommending some of those money for, for a phased-in window replacement at Booker T. Washington. At J Cox Elementary, again, we need to replace the roof, and you can see there's been an update in the, in their cost estimates. So moving from a million, 336, their more recent estimates are 3.4 million. And again, design work has not been started on this roof. There are projects that were moved from the capital plan that we, we asked the city for 16 million dollars, they gave us 10. So the, the last five items are, were recommended for funding in the capital plan, the 16 million, that we're now recommending that we use reversion funds. So those are the roofs at Booker T. Washington, with an updated estimate on the, on the cost. Replacing doors and windows at Laramore, Ocean Air, a second phase of the roof at Rosemont. And, well, let me talk about that. We have included in the budget and our plan for fiscal '21 for the replacement of the Rosemont roof. We have about 2 million, or a little over 2 million dollars in the '21 budget for the roof. But we're, their, the cost estimates for the roof are more than double what our original estimates were. So we will be able to do phase one of Rosemont with the money that's in the '21 budget, this year's capital budget. We would need to spend a little more than that next year in order to complete the, the second phase of that roof. The, the building is an, is a very large building, and there are sections of it, so it's, it's not like we're gonna go to the middle of the seam and stop. It'll, it would go between walls, by parapet. And then the last item, Sewell's Point Elementary School, there's a little bit there. That project appears both in the capital money from the city and also the reversion, because there wasn't enough in either place to fund the whole thing. So I think there's 760,000 that would be coming out of the city capital funds, and 288,000 coming from the reversion funds. So those are our recommendations for both the 17, excuse me, the 10 million dollars of city capital money and the 17.7 million of reversion funds.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Campson, go ahead, and then Mr. Clanton, Ms. Smith.
I, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly, because usually, I'm a big booster for the city council. I think I keep remembering how wonderful it was to finally get those five schools built, and that was a great thing they did. But now I'm looking at this and it's.
Campson, I'm sorry, um, I can't believe I'm asking you this. Can you please speak up?
Yes. All right, so anyway, so the city council stepped, the city council stepped up and, and built us five schools.
They can hear you, city council.
Good, they need to be hearing what I'm getting ready to say. And, and, and I felt forever grateful. I know how hard I worked to get a new Ocean View school. I was so grateful, and I've been a real booster. But it sounds like what you're saying is that we gave them, that this was available for them. Did we send them this list to, so they show, so this list showed where every penny we were asking for was going? Did we do that? Or did they ask, not ask for it?
They were aware of it, because we had presented it to you. But for the reversion funds, you'll recall that you didn't actually vote on a plan. You, I think you, you, you requested that the board had flexibility to identify the projects. They are aware of it, because the open access laws, I mean, they, they've seen it, because they saw your meeting.
So the city council knows exactly what we need to have at Lake Taylor School. We need to have some windows.
City staff knows. I can't speak of, I can't speak of council.
So my, so my feeling right here is, the city needs to step up. It's time for us to start saying, the city needs to step up. We have no way to raise money. The reason we need all these repairs done is because the city council has underfunded ma, maintenance for this district for years and decades. And so now I'm looking at, I feel like crying. I'm looking at the things, what, have you ever thought about being in a classroom, and you're six years old, and you're trying to focus on a lesson, and you've got a trash can here, cat, catching the water as it flows from the roof, drip, drop, drip, drop, right next to that desk? And so, but we're not gonna do the windows now, because they didn't give us the money, or the roof. And the windows, they leak, and it comes in, you can't even have anything on the counters or anything in front of the windows in the school system, because the windows all leak. They come in to try and fix them and caulk them, and then you can't open the windows. So I, I'm really, really upset hearing this. And I think the city needs to step up to the plate and give us that 7 million dollars back, because there's not a penny of it wasted, not a penny in this list. And it's inexcusable that the city council, who has been a good partner in the past, I'm not saying they haven't, I'll never forget the five schools, but that time's gone. This is today, and we're looking at doors, the Azalea, thank goodness, you walk over there, the doors leak. You need, the, it comes up to your calf in the hallway where those doors are leaking. That's how bad it is, city council. So I think that we shouldn't just go with this. I think we need to go back to the city council again. Don't know how it's done, but the superintendent probably does. And we need to say, no, 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 we are not satisfied. We keep grabbing 7 million dollars, so we don't have roofs leaking on children. So we don't have to caulk and nail the windows shut to keep the water from coming in there. So that all of these things are done, and done now, with this 7 million dollars. They use it for other things, they just bought in military circle. So I'm very, very angry about it, everyone. And I will be talking to my city councilman, I'll probably text him, about how I feel about this. And so I urge everyone here, and everyone listening, I don't know if it's legal for me to urge them to do it, but tell your city councilman, you don't want water leaking on your child when they're trying to learn. Let's fix these schools. And I feel a lot better having gotten it out.
Thank you.
Lauren, tell us how you really feel.
Ms. Campson, okay, um, Mr. Clanton.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. And, and in the same spirit with Doc, Ms. Campson, I don't wanna call her doctor, I'll call that. Um, thank you, Mr. Jenkins, for clarifying it, because I was over here doing a calculation, and I saw particularly at Booker T. with the roof replacement, and I said, well, there's about a 271,000 dollar difference there. But that goes back to the point, why we can't keep waiting. Because I'm quite sure that that estimate went up, and it's gonna continue to go up every year that we wait. And so this is why we have to, this is, this is, to the taxpayers in the city, this is why we need action. This is why we need to work with council, to work with us, and to send a plan over to them, because it's gonna continue to go up. Nothing's getting cheaper around here, and you look at how much it's gonna cost for a high school and everything else, it's gonna keep going up. But I did wanna have a bigger picture here, and how these things kinda all work with each other. Looking on page four, with J Cox, when we look at the HVAC. If we have J Cox as listed in the recommendation that's coming to us as a potential school for rebuild, but then I look and I see that there's a million, a million three that's sitting here for HVAC, HVAC replacement, this is where I kinda get, this, it's that dance, that delicate dance we have to do. Because do we, it really needs it, I've been in the building, and we know that they need HVAC, they need roof replacement. But there needs to be something from us, if we are gonna identify that this is a school that it's going to, we're gonna send to council and saying, do we wanna work with you to rebuild? Then that's when it kinda goes back to me, that those dollars need to be reverted somewhere else, where we're having additional expenses that we're seeing. There's costs, I think there, Rosemont is asking for additional dollars and other places. So this is kinda where, I'm kinda at that, that torn place, because it's like, we, we see that at J Cox. I think I also saw that, yeah, J Cox, both on the roof replacement. And then, yeah, I think there was, women, it's another one of my schools, uh, I saw there. But I know definitely J Cox jumped out at me, because we had identified that in the plan there. And of course, we're gonna, this is why I was kinda pushing about identifying in July, are we gonna take some action? Because then that would determine, not saying that I wouldn't vote to say that this is here, because we may come back and change, which means that we can still change that. Because I think this plan is capital improvement, Mr. Jenkins, when is that?
This is fiscal '22.
It's fiscal '22. So we got a whole year before we would expense any of those dollars out. So this would give us an opportunity in July, if we're gonna take any of these recommendations that may come from the administration and move forward with that. Then we got an opportunity to divert and move some additional funds somewhere else to help another school. And again, not taking away from the bigger picture of trying to break up some of these things. But I think that you've given us a plan, and I know that it's not an easy job to kinda dance around with these numbers and trying to fit them in there. But again, I think with the CIP, using these one-time funds that we have here, notwithstanding saying that academics and then what's happening inside the classroom is not important. That's the number one priority. But we have got to take action that supports those, those things that are happening within the classroom. So with that, I, I'm comfortable with what I, what I'm seeing, just me personally. This, because I wanted to make sure that I understood, so we've got a whole year, so, thank you, Dr. Martin.
If I could, if we were to get a commitment from the city to rebuild J Cox, we certainly would not. We, we would keep the building repaired until the new one would be.
Yeah, we wouldn't make a major investment like that.
But notwithstanding a commitment, then we would need to make some repairs.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. So, the city council approved ten million, correct, for CIP?
That is correct.
One million of its buses.
May I finish, please? Thank you. One million of it is for the buses. So, my question is, the remaining nine million, what is the source of those funds? I can only identify six million, that is, the SWIFT funds. So, what is the source of the remaining three?
Okay. The SWIFT funds do provide six million. Three million is going to come from money that the city will borrow, is what I'm told. But it's going to come from the city coffers, either from current revenue. But I believe, I've been told, I've been told that they generally borrow. So, they will issue bonds and will receive a small part of those bonds. And then I believe, I'm not sure about the million in school buses. I believe that comes out of the city's operating, operating funds, the current tax collections they receive.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else? Dr. Gabriel?
I'm going to piggyback on Ms. Smith. So, I think it would be helpful for us to understand the buckets of funds. And I know that we've gone over it several times. But the three million dollars, as I understand it, from the city is a continuing revenue source that we normally get from the school, from the city to the school division.
That is correct for deferred maintenance. And again, it's mostly, they generally borrow money for it.
The SWIFT funds have a sunset.
It does, to twenty-twenty-five.
And I think it's, what, for four years or five years?
Five years.
Five years. So, it would be good to see, you know, that bucket of money, how, the timeframe, how much it is every year. And then, as you had said, the one million for the buses. But also incorporated in this, can we, we mentioned this before in the previous conversation, the funds with regards to the land sale for the casino, where does that ten million dollars fall? Because they had originally said something about a portion of it for Maury and a portion of it for Booker T. Washington. I think it would be helpful to know if those funds are out there and if the city has committed to those funds for us, maybe that can also help with offsetting some of these items. And definitely would agree with Mr. Clanton, going back to our point that we had made at the previous conversation about if we understand what the city's commitment is with regards to building new schools, we can take all some of these things, the HVAC at J Cox, the roof at J Cox, if we are guaranteed that they will be rebuilding the school. And I guess, will we get that information come July? Is that what we would be prepared to vote on? Or I guess it would just determine on what the city comes back with us at, with, what the city presents back to us with, with what they're capable of doing.
I'm not sure with the timeline on, on the city's giving us information about what their commitment is.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Martin, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess trying, I guess piggybacking off of previous colleagues. So, our whole process around capital projects is getting confusing for me. So, I ask for people's forgiveness with that. So, let me start with this. The, the difference in the estimates from March to whatever the time this presentation was put together, let's say, May. So, can you explain a little more about why it is in March we were seeing estimates at one level? And then by May, in some cases, is two and three times? I mean, what is it that we did or did not do in March that we did do in May that created that, that changed, that delta?
We have a couple of roof projects that are in the twenty-one budget. And the operations staff is working with the architects now on the design of those projects. In sort of mid-March or late March, we became aware that the architects' estimates, based on, one, a thorough observation of the building and the condition of it, and the drawings that they were providing were substantially greater than the estimates that we derived from the facility, the draft of the facility master plan. So, the, the estimates that we, that we had came out of a draft facility master plan that was a couple of years old, but I don't believe it reflected the conditions of the, of the roofs that we were being, that we were working on, or that the architects were designing. The amounts that they were estimating were substantially greater than we had in our plan. And based on the work of, and it's at Sherwood Forest, and they've done some work at Rosemont. Based on their estimates of those roofs, the size, the conditions, and the market, just the pricing of the current market, their estimates were substantially greater than, than we had included in the CIP derived again from the draft facility master plan. So, we felt like it was prudent. In fact, if we didn't update the estimates for the other roofs, we were going to be continuously behind. And we would simply delay something that we were going to have to come to you about. So, it just felt, we felt like we needed to revise our estimates. And as I said earlier, these are only our estimates. Architects have not even started putting pencil to paper. So, we have a better idea once the roof gets designed. But until it goes through procurement and, and willing contractors actually give you their bid, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost.
And I have no expertise in this. What I'm really trying to get a hold of is our process and then how is the board, what comes to us at one point in time and then what comes to us at another point in time. And then also have an understanding of what we're doing when we come up with FCI's and these estimates and then when we get these, these reports. So, I thought we got an updated, we did some type of updated review with the FCI, the facilities condition work. Some update was done in twenty-twenty. So, so the, are you saying that from the estimates that were done in twenty-twenty, that's what was given to us for the list of projects that we worked on and submitted to council in March? And then between March and May, some, another set of individuals went through and did some additional deeper dive work that then created the delta? Is that, is that what I'm, what you're saying?
The, the original estimates, as I understand, were based on industry estimates over, I mean, I guess, industry averages. The ones, the estimates for Sherwood and for Rosemont, that we use, that we use those two models in order to realize that we were, we had underestimated the cost of our roofs. Those were based on design work for those specific buildings. We had, we had estimates for Sherwood, there were about one, I think, a one-point-two million dollars. Very early in the design stage, the architects told us that we could not do that roof for one-point-two, that it was, that it was off substantially. And I think our new estimate is two-point-two or significantly greater.
Okay. I guess-
And I, and I hear what you're saying. In retrospect, we would have hoped to have had better estimates when we brought this to you in March, but we did not.
Yeah. I think what I'm just advocating is whatever the processes we need to do to try to have estimates at a time when we have to make decision-making that let them take a one-point-three-million-dollar estimate in March and then turn it into a three-point-four-million-dollar estimate in May. I mean, that is, that's significant. So, I just hope we can-
And we agree with you one-hundred percent.
And I'm not an expert either, but I am an owner of a very old home. And I, I know that there's market inflation right now on, on materials that are really impacting this. And, but I do agree with you, Mr. Jordan, if we can come up with a way to have, you know, accurate numbers, which I know you, you just provided them to us. But, but they've been up for, you know, as a result of COVID, they've been up for-
Yeah. And if it's materials, that, that to me is fine. If it's something else we need to do in terms of our processes, that's what I want to make sure. The other piece I want to go back to is, I know we've talked a lot about taking action and, and city council and so forth. So, in one sense, I'm appreciative of the work that the school board and the council and administrations have done together that allowed us to do operating funding formula, make adjustments as needed. You know, we initially did the first round of the facilities condition index and presented that, because the request was, "Tell us what you need." And I think that has prompted and been very effective in some of the conversations that we've had. Where I'm, still have a concern, so let's just use the SWIFT money, for example. So, you know, I know in my conversations with the, with the mayor, when the SWIFT funds came up, that those were funds that were allocated to the school system. They were supposed to go in the school construction fund. I even think in the city's resolution with all this stuff on their side, they still show it as school, school construction fund. And so, I'm more so concerned about what, what we're sharing and what we, what we're dealing with. And I mean, as a, as a board and a team. So, the SWIFT money has been out there for, I don't know, two, three years. So-
Fiscal twenty-one is the first year it was included in our budget.
I mean, in terms of the, when we started having the conversations around the SWIFT funds and I think thirty million dollars, it was aligned when we were working on the, the funding formula. And so, having the, I say thirty million, I don't know what the number is today, but having that money in a bucket and then divvying that money out to us, I don't necessarily see that as new money. I see that as allocating, providing money, appropriating money that's already been sitting in the bucket. The, the money that my colleagues were talking about with the casinos, I see that as, as, as new money. So, I just think what, the reason why we initially were always doing these five-year capital improvement plans, it is then the school board saying to the city council, "This is what we prioritize." And we present that, that plan, which is what I think we're saying we're trying to get to in, in, in July.
You will have that in July, yes, sir.
And so I think if, you know, just, just for our own conversations, and this is one of the reasons that, you know, we had the conversation in March about this, is I just think we have to do a very good job of just saying, "Here's what we need. Here's what we need it for, and here's what we're going to do that," and then present that. And then, as Ms. Campson has said, and then do the collaboration and the advocacy to, to, to get there. The, I think Dr. Gabriel may have been touching on that, and if not, I apologize and I'll take the full, full ownership of it. But at the end of the day, we got three million dollars like we normally received. We received, we got money from the SWIFT account that we already had money there, so that wasn't new money. And then here we are again, where the bulk of what we're dealing with are reversion funds. And right now, and I asked at the last meeting, what are we projecting that the reversion funds are going to be this year? Which could be, who knows what? But-
A lot.
We were, we were trying to, you know, in working with the funding formula and working with the city and at a board, we were trying to get our structural house in order so that we would not end up each year with, with these large amount of unspent dollars. Because while what was said earlier in terms of positions, if the positions don't get filled, then we know that there's work that's not, not getting done. And so I just want to say, it's part of this conversation. And maybe at the next meeting, we need to get a sense, and maybe it'll, it'll be in July, of this next round of unspent funds, on top of what I mentioned earlier, whatever we're doing with the ESR funds on the, on the academic side. Because this, this capital issue, as Ms. Campson said, I don't think is going to go away tomorrow. But on the academic side, we were seeing, you know, thirty, forty percent of some of our cohort groups fail in two or three courses. We've, we've got to make sure, in my mind, we got to take care of that. And then whatever we feel that we have left over, that based upon whatever the legislation says we can and cannot do, we can support these, these other needs. I agree with Ms. Campson. I don't want anybody in a classroom where the water is flowing. And I don't want anybody in a classroom where the water is flowing and they don't have the teaching resources, the resources that they, they need. But I just wanted to share that piece of it and really just hone in on this estimating piece is a big concern. It's a big red flag, and I'm glad you put it in red, because I think that was the intent.
Those are the ones where there was a large price increase, yes, sir. I can't say, Mr. Jordan, that, I can't tell you specifically what savings we have in our budget now. I do know that the city reduced their budget for fiscal twenty-two, excuse me, fiscal twenty-one at the start of the pandemic, and that their revenues have been much stronger than they thought they would be. So, there's a, there's a healthy amount of reversion that's not from savings or from money that's in our budget now, but from the difference between what the city allocated in city funds and what they actually collected. So, there's going to be a sizable amount there, and I believe that part is about six million.
And the last thing, Dr. Martin, I would, I would encourage us to also go back and look at the Council of Great City School reports. I mention that often, because there are some things in there, to me, that seem to align with some of what we're seeing. And I think we've got to make absolutely sure that, that we've shored up where we, where we need to shore up. And also will just remind colleagues, when we talk about taking action, at one point during the educational planning, when we were talking about later start times and we were talking about bus transportation, there was a belief at one point in time that there was some realized savings that we would benefit by paying attention to bus routes and zoning and, and start times. And so, some of these things, we're saying, "We don't take actions," because we delayed action. And then we're still dealing with some of the consequences of those delays. So, those are some other actions that we can also take to support efficiency that then feeds the whole system and cycle that we've been talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Bassine, go ahead.
Yes, and I, I wholeheartedly second what Mr. Jordan just said about some of the other items that have come through educational planning that we haven't taken action on. So, I have a couple of questions on, so the items that were in the twenty-one CIP that are delayed, we have new projects for FY twenty-two. Why not complete the FY twenty-one projects?
We're working on those. We are, Aaron, thinking this too.
But it's, I think if I'm, if, unless I'm misunderstanding, it says the revised proposal is to delay those projects.
Okay. Yeah, let me explain that. That may be confusing. We had planned more in capital than council actually appropriated a year ago for the current year. We're just about finished. So, there were some projects that were in the original twenty-one plan that we had asked for funding for. We received a smaller amount of funding in, for twenty-one. This is a year ago for the current year. Those projects were still there. We had to delay those. So, they, many of the projects that are appearing on the reversion were projects that we had initially planned for in twenty-one, but we did not get sufficient funding from the city for capital in twenty-one to, to actually start those projects. We received, I believe, eight million dollars of funding from the city for fiscal twenty-one for capital projects, and we are working on those now.
Okay.
But these were over and above the eight million.
So, that rolled over into the next. Okay. All right. I just want to be sure I understood the way it was presented here correctly. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. I appreciate you leading us in this discussion. leading us in this discussion. All right, our next agenda item, we have our, um, Gifted Education Plan for signing. Good evening. Good evening.
and members of the Norfolk Public Schools School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed revisions to the Norfolk Public Schools Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted. I'm excited to share with you our vision of gifted services over the next five years, which is the result of applying research-based practices to feedback received by various stakeholders across the district and recommendations made by the College of William and Mary Center for Gifted Education. Today's agenda includes a brief summary of why we are here and the work done in preparation to present to you a clear, comprehensive plan for Norfolk Public Schools Gifted Education Services with an eye on equity, consistency, and high expectations for all students. After a short historical synopsis, I will share big ideas or overall concepts extrapolated from research that embody the rationale behind our proposed revisions, which I will then briefly expand upon. As you are aware, we are here to modify a state mandated document known as the Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted. This document is shared with the Norfolk community and holds our district accountable for providing equitable and effective gifted services. The Local Plan contains twelve sections all districts must address, including how it defines gifted students, how we identify and serve those students, what types of professional development is provided, along with an evaluation system to ensure we are meeting our goals. Our ultimate mission is to present to you a revised gifted plan that clearly articulates comprehensive and equitable services that effectively meet the needs of exceptional students. The district has been working diligently on updating its five-year plan for some time. In late two thousand eighteen, Norfolk Public Schools contracted the College of William and Mary to do a thorough needs assessment of its gifted services in preparation for this local plan revision. Their findings and recommendation were presented to the school board last December. After a gifted local plan kickoff meeting with administrators and representatives across Norfolk Public Schools last January, our department held numerous internal and external focus groups the following two months. Twenty-one breakout group videos were transcribed and analyzed, along with pages of notes and various survey responses. We have also applied recommendation from Norfolk Public Schools Gifted Education Advisory Committee, known as GIAC. We reviewed proposed changes to the Virginia Department of Education's gifted regulations and analyzed and compared other districts' gifted local plans. Research findings obtained through national and state conferences and gifted practices gleaned from professional development provided a plethora of best practices and gifted pedagogy that were considered in this revision process. Regarding the focus groups, our department conducted a series of in-depth discussions regarding Norfolk Public Schools gifted services among a number of stakeholders earlier in the year. This included three two-hour internal focus groups consisting of central and business administrators, along with representatives from across the district. Two external focus groups were held in March, consisting of GIAC members, parents, teachers, and other community members, and then we obtained feedback received from our department's own gifted resource teachers. In all, we received input from over one hundred people representing eight different stakeholder groups. This allowed us to obtain feedback from a variety of lenses to determine themes and patterns to be analyzed, cross-referenced, and thoughtfully applied as we took on the challenge of overhauling a somewhat outdated local plan, modernizing it to include more equitable and pragmatic services. As mentioned, the revision process included a review of proposed changes to the VDOE's Regulations Governing Educational Services for Gifted Students, which were accepted by the Virginia Board of Education last October. Some of the highlights in the VDOE changes include emphasis on equity, talent development, additional secondary courses, and acceleration procedures, all of which were considered as we revised our current Norfolk Public Schools Local Plan. Now to present our big ideas. An overarching theme providing the impetus behind Norfolk Public Schools' revised local plan is this. All students deserve to be challenged and learn something new every day and have the academic and effective supports needed to cultivate their true potential. Upon analysis of focus group feedback and recommendations, we consolidated patterns of responses into overarching themes derived from each letter of the word "more." These main ideas include: Make advanced-level services available to all students. Offer additional opportunities for interest and career exploration, along with academic choice for advanced learners. Raise awareness and understanding through training and communication efforts, and ensure equity through clear, consistent expectations. An increase in services or "more" was a consistent theme expressed by stakeholders in regards to representation, potential, structured, training, communication, GRTs programs, advanced curricula, and, other words, overall resources. This may also entail making better use of the resources we already have. Even gifted education can work smarter. Two subsets of our big ideas emphasize the needs of putting services above labels. Instead of being overly concerned with identification numbers, the focus shifts to ensuring we have the appropriate services and supports in place that best meets the students' varying degrees of need. This leads to our second subset, a quote from Wes Moore, bestselling author, veteran, and social entrepreneur. "Potential is universal; opportunity is not." We need to provide those opportunities that cultivate student potential from across the district. One best practice is to use local norms to create a talent pool of students in every elementary school who would benefit from additional exposure and enrichment. These ideas should lead to more equitable representation and advanced academics across the district. To address the ideas around opportunities, potential, and appropriate services, Norfolk Public Schools can specifically look at its identification practices. One research-based solution is offering a talent development pool at every elementary school, which would focus on developing potential to better prepare students to be successful in those higher academic learning environments. The Norfolk Public Schools Talent Pool, known as Emerging Scholars, would consist of students who scored in the top fifteen percent of the first-grade COGAT abilities test, known as COGAT, but did not yet show readiness for general intellectual aptitude or specific academic aptitude accelerated services. These students are marked in synergy as emerging scholars and provided enrichment and exposure in grades two through four. In the late fall of grade four, during the next gifted testing window, these students will take the COGAT again to determine if they are now ready for those GIA or SAA level services. We will also better align our universal screening benchmark with the level of service to ensure students are appropriately placed. For example, we cannot expect students without the same level of learning opportunities or exposure to automatically be ready for accelerated curriculum without supports in place. It is not because these students are unable to be successful in higher-level services. They just need more time and targeted learning experiences. Please note, there is no benchmark score needed to qualify a student as an emerging scholar, nor does a benchmark alone determine eligibility for any referred student. Norfolk Public Schools will continue to use multiple criteria, including rating forms, student portfolios, interviews, and classroom observations to determine if a referred student is eligible for gifted services. Applying local norms is a research-based practice used to increase equity. If you are not familiar with local norms, this means we will use each building's specific COGAT scores to compare students versus national norms and percentages when selecting students to participate in the Emerging Scholars Talent Pool. No screening benchmark would be applied. Students who scored in the top fifteen percent of their school are selected. This practice is similar to schools' academic rankings, choosing your junior varsity versus varsity athletic teams, and even choosing your first chair violinist in the school orchestra. As you can see on this slide, by applying local norms to create a talent pool, this can have a significant impact on the number of students from various schools who would qualify automatically for services. Differentiated services are at the heart of gifted education, and we propose Norfolk Public Schools offers multiple levels of services based on student readiness. This model coincides with focus group feedback, along with other district practices that believe services should be prioritized before identification. This multi-level service model also addresses the belief that advanced academics and critical thinking strategies should be made available to all students. There are four levels of service in this revised models. Level one and two are available to all students in varying degrees. Advanced curriculum units can be integrated within pacing guides, and critical thinking strategies part of tier-one instruction. Gifted resource teachers, or GRTs, would participate in grade level planning to collaborate on differentiation and push into classrooms either to model a lesson or provide targeted small group instruction. More specifically, GRTs would be required to push into all K-one classes each week to provide critical thinking practice in preparation for the first-grade universal COGAT screener. Included on this slide is just a sampling of nationally recognized gifted curriculum and resources that can be adapted for all students and help develop critical thinking and other higher-level academic skills. Students selected for Level Three and Level Four will be provided more specialized services unique to their needs. This includes providing pull-out instruction once a week, clustering identified students in classrooms, and the development of customized curriculum. Level Three Emerging Scholars Talent Pool students are clustered in classrooms and receive pull-out instruction focused on enrichment and exposure while also developing those higher-level thinking skills. Level Four General Intellectual or Specific Academic Aptitude Pullouts focus more on accelerated content and autonomous learning, as well as honing skills needed to be successful in more rigorous coursework. They, too, are to be clustered in the classrooms to allow students to work both with age-level and academic-level peers, taught in classrooms consisting of specially-trained clustered teachers. There was ample feedback from stakeholder groups regarding increasing opportunities for students to explore interests and careers, including the development of other talents, such as those in the visual and performing arts and career and technical education. Therefore, we would like to bring back to Norfolk Public Schools the Arts and Science After-School Enrichment Program. For those of you unfamiliar, it is an umbrella program managed by our department, under which every school offers a selection of extracurricular programs, such as music classes, art, dance, future problem solving, social etiquette, computer coding debate, and even outdoor adventures. Consistent and relevant training is essential in order to ensure highly qualified teachers are providing equitable opportunities for academic and personal growth for all students. The main change in Part Nine of the Local Plan regarding professional developments includes verbiage requiring training for all gifted and emerging scholars' cluster teachers, along with training for honors IB, International Baccalaureate, and AP, Advanced Placement, teachers. Our department will provide regular professional development opportunities during the summer, pre-service week, and on district and building service PD days. Our gifted local plan will emphasize the expectation for better communication across the district. This includes internal and external workouts, excuse me, workshops for parents and Norfolk Public Schools staff. GRTs will also offer schools targeted training catered to its particular needs or instructional focus, and help host neighborhood school information nights to increase awareness of gifted services and ideally increase participation. Essential to any plan is its implementation, as vision without any action becomes only a dream. Therefore, measures must be in place to hold us accountable. Section Ten of the Local Plan communicates how Norfolk Public Schools will annually evaluate its services to ensure we are showing progress in meeting our goals. We have updated this section to include specific data points to review every year. We will especially focus on data surrounding the effect of the Emerging Scholars Talent Pool, looking at representation and success rates in higher academic courses, and of course, overall student and parent satisfaction. With our plan's proposed increase in services, there would be associated costs. In order for the local plan to be followed with fidelity, we ask the school board to support the hiring of a GRT at every school by the end of this five-year plan. We appreciate your earlier approval to add five more GRTs this coming school year, who will be placed full-time in targeted elementary schools, including Monroe, Jaycocks, Lindenwood, Chesterfield, St. Helena, Richard Bowling, and Ingleside. Their students should benefit significantly from the Emerging Scholars Talent Pool services. Furthermore, to ensure Norfolk Public Schools has highly qualified gifted resource teachers, training our cluster and emerging scholar teachers, and all advanced curriculum teachers, we wish to partner with a university to create our own, grow your own gifted education cohort. This will help more Norfolk Public Schools teachers become endorsed in gifted education and ultimately provide more effective services to students at all levels. Lastly, in order to offer a robust Arts and Sciences enrichment program that provides equitable opportunities across schools throughout the district, additional funds will be needed for materials, student field trips, competitions, and of course, teacher stipends. Thank you for your time and support of Norfolk Public Schools Gifted Education Services. With these local plan revisions set to start in 2022, Norfolk Public Schools will be even more capable to offer our students the education they deserve. I look forward to addressing any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Sted. I appreciate the, um, the very thorough, exciting, um, revisions to our gifted education program. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor, Ms. Bassin and then Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Ms. Sted, thank you so much for an excellent presentation. Um, you've really shown how, um, how the district can provide equitable gifted education in a manner that is research-based. And I think that's, that's incredible, an incredible movement, um, for the division. Um, a couple of questions. So, um, in regards to the local norms, so I'm glad to see that local norms will be used. Um, there's a lot of research around that. Some of the research has shown that, or at least districts that I've seen and learned about have used ten percent, the top ten percent. And I was, I was wondering if you could describe how you and your team arrived. how you and your team arrived at fifteen percent?
It varies. It depends on the research. Some say ten percent, fifteen percent. I went off Rinzouli's enrichment model. He said ten to fifteen percent. So I opted to get more, to offer more services as opposed to less services.
Okay, okay. I figured that was probably why, but wanted to hear more about that. And as part of the metrics that you will look at to evaluate is social and emotional learning. You know, metrics around that also going to be evaluated and included as part of the plan?
As much as we can. It's somewhat difficult to really capture it in data form, but by doing the student and parent satisfaction, we hope to capture that because we will be acting those kinds of questions in a survey or even a face-to-face interview. So we will do some type of yearly, especially exit strategy for students moving on from Norfolk Public Schools. So how was your experience? What are your thoughts? What would you recommend and so forth? Social-emotional needs is a very strong component of the local plan, and it's especially emphasized in our secondary services because those GRTs are really working with those adolescents. That's a very high turnover time where students decide, I don't want to be gifted anymore. Too much pressure. I want to fit in. And so that's really when the social-emotional component is important through the whole thing. Don't get me wrong. But our gifted students are very highly sensitive, and they're very, very much want to be accepted. And there are all different variations. So absolutely a strong component of the local plan. It will be part of professional development. It'll probably top of the list.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And you kind of touched on it. Now, we know that there are a lot of gifted students that are or have, students that have been identified as gifted who aren't in our specialty programs because those programs are not necessarily gifted, you know, gifted programs. And that's something that, you know, I would like for us, you know, as a board and as a district to really look at the academic performance of our gifted students who are not just, you know, in those specialty programs but across the division as a whole. So I look forward to seeing that. I too am excited to hear about the advocacy for a GRT in every school building. I was glad to see five GRTs added this year. And from what you just mentioned, I feel a whole lot better knowing that they'll be targeted in the schools that have been underserved in recent history. So will those five GRTs be serving two schools at a time or...?
We're gonna try to get to, we're gonna focus on elementary first. So with the addition of the five more, that only leaves ten more schools that have a part-time GRTs. So the schools I named will have a full-time. That was on purpose because we need to build their capacity. And we're gonna really build that Emerging Scholars Talent Pool for those students. Ideally, in a couple of years, you're gonna see higher ID numbers and GIA/SAA that get reported to the state.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, that clears that up for me. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you. And I would agree with my colleague, Ms. Bassin. This was a great presentation. I kind of almost got goosebumps because I read it ahead of time. But how you explain how everything is going to be implemented and the thought process behind it. This is the Norfolk Public Schools that I know. This is going above and beyond, not just what are the benchmarks, but this is, let's find that potential in every child. And I do like the quote that you used from Westmore, which I love that book.
The other Westmore?
Everybody, yeah. Give everybody the opportunity. Because if you don't, you never know what the potential could be. So I'm so excited about the Emerging Scholars Program. I think that's wonderful. You'll definitely have, you know, my support with whatever you need with regards to future funding for a GRT in every building. But I'm also really excited about these after-school programs with regards to the Rocketry and the North Star and the Debate and Forensics. Because, you know, just personally speaking, I benefited from this. When I went to Granby, I had a debate in forensics class. And the teacher was paid. I mean, there was a stipend associated with it. We had funds to go to competitions. It was never really, we raised some money, you know, but those opportunities were there for us. And it was great to compete, not only amongst the division but against regional aspects and state aspects. And it really allows our Norfolk students to really go above and beyond and show what we're capable of because we're capable of a lot of different things. So I'm thrilled about the presentation. Thank you so much for the direction that you're going in. This is wonderful. Oh, are we gonna be voting on the plan at the business meeting? Okay.
Yes. Camson?
I won't take but a couple of minutes. I agree with my two colleagues also about your Emerging Scholars Program. I think we all know that children who are at a disadvantage, low socioeconomic children, can be very, very, very bright, very gifted, but it's hidden or disguised by the fact that they haven't had the exposure to be able to demonstrate that in a standardized test, which universally, we all know discriminate. They're really, and so you have to do something. When you said that you were pushing in those gifted teachers to familiarize the primary-grade children and get them ready, that's something we did, and it's extremely successful. We really watched our numbers go up because we had so many disadvantaged children, and they were not able and had no practice in demonstrating the things at a test that's not really made for them. So I'm very, very excited about that. Excellent, excellent. But my one question is, young scholars, I assume that they now, they are still required to take a test to get into the Young Scholars Program? Or have you done away with that?
There's no test. They do an interview. Because it is a gifted program, but they have to, it's not for all gifted students by any means. It's a certain type of gifted student. So they apply and then they do an interview.
All right. Okay. And I think that's basically what they were doing when I was familiar with it. We sent them there. We tried. So what happens to the children that don't get into that when we're talking about middle school? Because the vast majority of identified gifted children are not in the Young Scholars Program. So is there some movement there to? Because I kept asking for a new, an expansion of the program, which we never did.
So that's an excellent point, and that's something I find very important as well. So I would love to expand the Young Scholars Program, absolutely. But we have to have the qualified teachers, and we have to, it is a program for a certain type of gifted student. Now, part of the issue is a lot of these students from the other schools aren't being exposed to what's called the Autonomous Learner Module. So what I'm proposing, what we do in our gifted pull-outs is to all fifth graders in all the schools be exposed to the Autonomous Learner Module program so they are better prepared to do their interview at the Young Scholars interview process. The other thing that we'll look at, that we'll be pulling those students, we will prepare them the whole fifth-grade year from all the schools. And ideally, because of the Emerging Scholars, we'll have more students being pulled out and being made aware. A lot of it is awareness, right? A lot of it is awareness and exposure of what's there. And so I'm happy to say that this year we, it does end up being lopsided to a certain amount of schools, but we do have representation, I think from Ingleside and Tidewater this year. So it's there. My goal is to increase the numbers where we have to look to expand the program.
See, that's what I want to say. I would hope that that would be something that you were aiming for because, you know, we practiced our kids for the interview too. But it, some of, it just doesn't seem fair that we have so many children who are not getting into Young Scholars, and it just seems like if you do all these things and they're working, that number that will make it through the interview is huge. But we're still gonna have children who aren't, and that we may lose the nature of the giftedness that they were able to exhibit because as you're starting to do, you're pushing in experiences and all for them. So I, to me, I'm not seeing a solution here yet from your department on what you're going to do about the rest of our gifted children once they hit middle school. And that's what, and I'm not asking you to suddenly pop out a plan right now.
It is definitely in my head, trust me. And the next revision, I've already, you know, ideally, when we have the Emerging Scholars, we're gonna develop a stronger pipeline of students that are more authentically ready to take on those highly rigorous classes. The issue is if we worry right now, if we don't accept the right student without the right preparation, they aren't necessarily successful in the Young Scholars. We want to prepare more students to be successful in the program and then either grow the Young Scholars or possibly provide another type of gifted program. The Young Scholars is a very structured, all-about acceleration. We all know that our gifted students are not all academically inclined. They could care less about getting As. They could care less about turning in an assignment. They want to know what they want to know. But they're extremely gifted, and they're extremely creative. The Young Scholars Program, as it is designed now, does not meet those types of gifted children's needs.
Perhaps another program, but we need to do something. I would, and I won't ask any more, just a last question. I'd like to see the data that tells, that shows me the percentage of children that get into Young Scholars who are not economically disadvantaged and the percentage of the economically disadvantaged. Because we all know that the children in that pool of economically disadvantaged children have just as many smart gifted kids as the pool of people that aren't in that, part of students. Does that show? And once again, if I could get this, I would appreciate having it. What's the percentage of non-socioeconomic children that get into Young Scholars of the ones that go in and do the interview? And even that kind of slices some kids out, just to see. Because that's a really big concern I've always had. I argued about it when I was a principal. We would be lucky to get one. It would be amazing if we could get two. And we would have ten kids going over, fifteen kids going over for interviews.
There are only forty slots.
I'm aware of it, and that's what I was told then. And I said, open more slots. That was my solution. And so anyway, if I could have that one, oh, I should be asking you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Ask the, I will follow the procedure and ask for something. And thank you. I'm sorry to talk more than I meant, more time than I meant to. But thank you very much for those answers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question, Ms. Sted. Is the, those after-school programs, are those available to all students or only the gifted?
All students.
Okay. I'm really, I'm really glad to hear that because I know that, like, particularly chess is one of those that students aren't, they're not playing it anymore. It's, you know, they're not getting exposed to those kind of games. So that's wonderful. Thank you.
All students, K through twelve. And it's, the purpose is for them to find their passion, their carrot, their reason to come to school, gifted and non-gifted.
Okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo and piggyback on Ms. Camson's request. I had something similar. And I know in our accountability plan, we had asked for it, enrollment report. We may have gotten it and just need to resurface it. But I think mine was a little bit broader just as we had an accountability plan in terms of the data overall in terms of socioeconomic diversity in our gifted program, my school, whatever the report had, that we could include what Ms. Camson said if that's not already included in that request. The other, I guess, point to ask a question. You know, there's a great deal of discussion that was going on across the Commonwealth and still is about racial and socioeconomic diversity in our regional gifted schools. And I know that for the Governor's School for the Arts, for our area, the percentage of socially-economically disadvantaged students over the last five years has hovered somewhere between thirteen and eighteen percent. Can you speak to, in this plan, where we are doing some things with intentionality to try to increase Norfolk's representation and opportunity for socially-economically disadvantaged students to successfully apply?
To the Governor's School for the Arts?
The pool and successfully get in for the Governor's School for the Arts.
So I've had this discussion with the Governor's School for the Arts. We've had this meeting. They are very much concerned with trying to build equity. And the reality is, the students again, and have had the money and the resources and the exposure to have the training to meet the requirements to get in. That being said, one of the biggest hurdles is those students seeing it. So it's real to them at an earlier age, right? So once they see it and they see that they can be successful in it and it applies to them, and not just certain people in certain areas of Norfolk, that will be the first step. Part of the reason to do that, that's part of my impetus for the Emerging Scholars. So it's not just academics we're gonna expose them to. We're gonna expose them to arts. We're gonna expose them to career or technology. So these students might necessarily, not necessarily be tagged for GIA or SA services, but they might decide, you know what, I want to go into music or I want to go into art because I had somebody come in. And not necessarily our GRTs. They aren't the experts with the music. But they will work with the music teachers. They'll expose them. They'll arrange field trips. That's part of Emerging Scholars as well. The other flip side of that is if we do this Arts and Sciences program, ideally, we will be able to offer in all the schools, especially at those economically disadvantaged ones, an after-school enrichment program where it's a music program. Where we would invite the Governor's School of the Arts. Somebody could come, do a presentation, talk to the students, get them excited, tell them what they need and so forth. So ideally, by exposing these students at an earlier age and making it look real to them, that it's something that applies to them and building that passion, then we will continue to work with them. And then, once they're an Emerging Scholar, they're tagged in synergy, regardless if they don't meet the higher-level in fourth grade, the testing results. They are always marked as an Emerging Scholar so that we can track to see whether or not those earlier interventions affected them later on. If they decided to do more for Governor's School, they go to North Star, some of the specialty programs. That's the goal of the early intervention. But that's a conversation that we've had, I've had multiple times with Governor's School. And it's a concern for them, and this is just a first step. This is not an answer by any means. It's not gonna fix the problem. But at least getting the start, you know, the exposure started, and then we can work on what we can do to help give these kids that training. And that just might be having more resources in Norfolk Public Schools.
Thank you. Dr. Martin, if, since we're gonna be voting on this in a couple of weeks, if we're, if it's possible to have the data with us when we vote, if that's possible, I think it would be good to have.
Dr., if I can add to Mr. Jordan's question there on the Governor's School. Serving as a chair and as an alum of the Governor's School, we just had our last board meeting maybe about a week ago. And one of the things that we've identified is funding within our budget for next year to work on a strategic plan. We just got the evaluation back from the state, from the Department of Education. And where we went, I guess, maybe a couple of years ago, we had twelve areas of findings where we were down to four. And one of the major focuses of the entire regional board is on that equity piece of making sure all of our school divisions have more students, socioeconomic, who are representative in the Governor's School. And exposure is one of the major pieces there. And I hope at some particular point, we will begin to put more funding back into our budget so that our kids can go to the symphony and the opera and a lot of these different programs there where kids have that aha moment where they can see, where they can potentially be onstage and do those other things. But we will be continuing to bring forth to you all and keep you updated. But there is a strategic plan that's gonna be going through that process next year.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Bassin. She's been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I was just gonna add to that, to piggyback on, you know, the questions that Ms. Camson and Mr. Jordan and others have asked about the percentages. I know when we talked about the specialty programs, we talked about not only having the socio-demographic data of those who were accepted, but also those who applied. And so I know that has come up a couple of times that, you know, I too would like to see that to make sure, you know, that we are, that the process is equitable. The other thing, the local norms is one of those big movements that are happening to ensure better racial representation in response to the inequity around gifted education and, you know, the segregation viability. So I was glad to see that here. But one other thing, I mean, a student is able, in order to really tap into what a student is capable of, we have to get them early, very early. And I think that this is one reason why, and this is tying into our next presentation, with our Title One funds, which we're now allowed to use for gifted education, that why, I would like to encourage us, and I do have this as a question as part of that discussion, is to have those enrichment opportunities through that funding source also, which we often, you know, focus on other areas like remediation instead of enrichment or and enrichment. So that's something that I would like the board to consider and the administration to consider also. So I just wanted to tie that together.
So just to wrap this up, whenever we're making a request for data to Dr. Birdsong, can you, so I just want to make sure we have what has been requested. can you, so I just want to make sure we have what has been requested for the vote on, um, on the 16th? So, the one was the socioeconomic data. What's that?
I'll get it in writing.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. Any, anything else? All right, thank you again. I appreciate it. Okay, next we have our title grants presentation.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Five minutes. Well, good evening. I guess it is evening now, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the board. Uh, today, I will be providing, um, information regarding the Title I application for the 2021-2022 school year. Next slide, please. As always, the purpose of Title I is to provide resources to schools in order to assist students in meeting academic standards. Additionally, Title I funds are used to support the district focus of early intervention and assistance to non-accredited schools. Much of this is achieved through collaboration with strategic departments on the use of funds and through professional development for staff. To truly meet the needs of schools, NPS ensures that a large majority of Title I funds are used in direct support of Title I schools and students. As this slide shows, 93% of funds in this application are in direct support of schools through school-level allocations and initiatives such as the instructional coaches, support for homeless students, or students in transition. Slide, thank you. New to the application this year is the addition of two division-level family engagement specialists that will work with the community. The focus of these two new staff members will be on English learner families and community partnerships. They will be members of the English as a Second Language Office and will support and extend the work that has already begun within the community. This slide reflects instructional coaches. But upon examining the needs of the scope, and the scope of work truly needed in this area, it was determined that family engagement specialists would better serve our students and families. We will upload a revised version of the application and presentation at the conclusion of this meeting. Each year, every Title I school is asked to review their current Title I staffing and adjust according, adjust accordingly to their needs identified in the data. For this coming school year, the proposed staffing outline is above. Next slide, please. In the 2021-2022 school year, Norfolk Public Schools will have 29 Title I schools. This is a reduction of three schools. Fairlawn's K-2 students will move to Lake Taylor and Fairlawn will no longer be served as a Title I school. Lake Taylor will see an increase in their allocation due to this increase in enrollment. Sewell's Point and Terrleton will no longer be served as Title I due to the percentage of low-income students falling below 35%. Principals were notified of this change last year and had this past school year to transition with the support of the Title I department. And with that, I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Melanick. Any questions? Jordan? Don't you go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead, oh, you.
Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you very much. Um, so, I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. The 21 pre-K classrooms, that does not include in the, is, is that different from the 15 that, this past year that we lost? So, that is, that is separate, okay.
That is separate, correct. That's for the three-year-old program, the, the ones that are in the Title I application.
Okay. Um, next, my question's around the ELL, uh, which I know some of it is also in the Title, I think Title III.
Title III, yes.
Grant as well. Um, one of the things, you know, the school board engaged in several listening sessions. And one that, um, really came out loud and clear was, um, you know, our translation services. And is that, so I have a question either here or in that Title III grant, where we are investing resources to enhance our capability to ensure that all instructional materials and engagement activities and, and information is all translated in a manner that, um, really engages the student and gets to better student outcomes. So, I don't know if you can speak to that, because I, I don't think I saw that in the grant application.
Yeah, and I believe Meredith could probably talk about this a little bit more, or Bruce, or, or, um, Dr. Poll. But there are translation services that are used. We even use them ourselves, because we translate the preschool application into Spanish using that service. But the, the two new family engagement specialists, we are hoping will be bilingual, specifically to not only, maybe not assist in the translation of documents, because I think you have to have a certification or something for that. But certainly at community meetings where they can be there as an additional person to help any questions that maybe someone with a, a, a low-level, um, speaking ability in Spanish, they could be there to help and assist with that. So, that's kind of our first step with this. And then I believe, um, Ms. Hopson can probably talk a lot more about some of those other translation services that are used.
Okay, all right, great. Because I did hear, you know, that that puts a lot of strain on our ESL.
Absolutely.
Teachers and, um, anyway, that was, that was a prominent feature. Um, the other question is around our students who are, um, home insecure. So, as we're hearing across the nation that that number, it was already rising pre-pandemic. And then, no doubt, throughout this pandemic, that number has probably increased substantially. Can you speak to that a little bit and how this grant is really targeting resources toward that population?
Absolutely. So, this year, we actually saw a reduction in numbers. Just, we think a lot of families didn't complete the McKinney-Vento paperwork because they were remote. And so, it wasn't a need to have to worry about the transportation, which is certainly one of the barriers that we help overcome. We anticipate, based on anecdotal evidence that we have, but also that our experts across the state are telling us, that there will be probably a significant increase come the fall of families who might apply for those services. Um, and so, we are already prepared. We're doing a lot of proactive things in our department. Everything from making sure we have our paperwork lined up and it's easy for families to understand, to working with our office managers and SDSs at the schools to make sure that they understand the point of reducing those barriers. Um, additionally, we have our homeless liaison, Ms. Walton, who works closely with various departments, including student support and Ms. Harmon, to work with the school counselors, to talk with, how can we better serve that particular subgroup of students and their needs? Ms. Harmon, I've talked to her several times, and she will tell you that her school counselors know who those students are and are working with them. But one of the things we've started to work closely with the schools on is attendance. Because we know that is definitely an issue. When we look at the attendance reports from each schools, we notice right away that several of the students on there are often McKinney-Vento students. Sometimes it's related to that home insecurity and sometimes it's not. But when it is, then we meet with the family to talk about what resources can we assist with, um, what wraparound services are available, what can the school do, what can our department do? So, we will absolutely funnel resources to those families and to that program as needed. And I think that we'll see that come to fruition in the fall that we'll need to, to revamp and think about what those, those families need.
Okay, so, so that's, that's a concern, not just, you know, yes, that group of students, but just in general. I think, um, I feel that individuals are wearing many, many hats. And, you know, I would like to be able to visibly see that resources are being allocated towards supporting, um, that need and really getting a better understanding and the application of what that need actually is. Um, so that was one thing that I, for me, was missing throughout the application is a real good understanding of what the need is. So that, you know, if you have instructional coaches up there, I know, you know, as, as a person who will be making a decision on whether to support the application or not, exactly what and why those resources are needed. So, um, so in general, I'll just say that, I, in several areas, and I know I, I don't want to take up too much time right now on all of those areas, but that was something that kind of stood out to me.
Sure, no, I appreciate that feedback.
Um, so, but I'll, I'll defer to my colleagues in the interest of time.
Thank you. I was, uh, I think I ask this every year. Uh, so when I look at the measurable objectives, there's some, a couple that are qualitative and many, I think, are, are more quantitative in nature. Uh, so, based upon what we have right now in terms of, uh, qualitative, can you explain the, the thought process behind using SOL combined reading rates for our measures rather than ESA or individual performance data?
So, um, in working with Dr. Poll and the correction, curriculum and instruction team, um, I think they were, we worked together on those goals. I think it was coming from the comprehensive needs analysis that you all received, um, as a board. And I think part of the goal was around some of those needs that were discussed in that assessment. I'll, if Dr. Poll wants to talk further about it, I, I certainly will yield to him. Um, but I think a lot of those goals kind of came from that data that was emerging from, from that analysis.
Yeah, and, and I was tying it to that because as we worked on, um, taking that needs analysis and working on our goals, we had a, we had a goal that didn't use combined rate, that used individual proficiency, I think, is how it got described. And so, that was what I was trying to get at, whether or not we should be aligned with that. And then, secondly, really just having an understanding of what the, if we do end up using combined rates, what, what that looks like. I mean, what is it, what's our real baseline? What are the numbers behind that, uh, combined rate, uh, as we know it, as we know it today for the gap groups that we've identified?
So, uh, it's a great question, Mr. Jordan. And one of the reasons we focused on the combined rate is seeing the growth at each level, especially the majority of our Title I schools are elementary schools. And that growth, um, into the equation of, of success, I think, is important. To, to watch a student who could possibly go from a 275 to a 300 and get growth for that and continuously grow was the focus point of the combined rate. Instead of, you know, having expectations of a student who might have to go from 275 to 400 to count in the pass rate. Um, so, you know, looking at that, that growth, I think, is imperative as the state's done a lot of research around that as well, is why, why they could, they, they created the growth in the combined rate. Um, so that was the, the reason for the focus of the combined rate on the, um, on the title application here.
I mean, I'm, I'm a supportive of the growth, but, uh, since we have up to 10, I think it is, measurable objectives, what is it that prevents us from being able to say we want to see the proficiency rates and want to be able to see combined, the combined rates? I mean, what's?
I understand. And I, you know, my feeling is that the combined rate has them both, the, the proficiency rate and the growth included. And they're not, they're just not separated out. So, you, you, that combined rate gives you the, the, the percentage of students who passed as well as the ones who grew, um, in there. And that, you know, so it's kind of the, the best of both worlds, in my opinion. So, so you, you have that. You know, in future data, I think it can be broken out to show the growth specifically in the past specifically. But I think for the data for the, the Title I, you know, again, was looking at that growth overall in reading and math, because we saw the deficiencies in those areas.
Right, so I think what I'm asking is, um, with, as you said, within that combined rate, it has the growth and it has the, those that are meeting the proficiency level. Can we see what that is today for, for these gap groups? So that as a board, we, we can follow it.
So, are you specific to the Title I schools on, on this one, to see it for a start?
It says, uh, increase the SOL combined reading rate from spring 2019 to '22 for students in black gap group, economically disadvantaged gap group, and students with disabilities by four percentage points. So, in that combined group, there's, there's a numerator and a denominator that makes up that group.
Correct.
But we don't get to see what's, what's been identified, uh, in that numerator and denominator. I'm trying to see what's, what's in there.
Okay, so, we, I can pull that from the CNA. This was the data from the overall division-wide data that we pulled from. And when we looked at the 4% rate of growth, it, if we have the growth at each school that, you know, at the 4%, we're seeing growth everywhere across. But if, if I'm hearing you correctly, you want to know what our current rate is and where we would need to grow to, to meet this goal?
Maybe what I'll do is, on the, on the DOE website, before they had this chart.
Right.
That showed how you could calculate the, uh, the combined. I'm trying to understand it, how you are calculating it based upon the gap groups that you've identified.
Same exact way the VDOE does. So, the, the, the growth percentage, the pass percentage, the, um, the, um, the recovery percentage, the, you know, all those pieces that the VDOE counts for the growth is how we would count the growth on this as well.
For the sake of time, I'll, I'll follow up with an email. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Ms. Hopson, presenting.
Bruce Brady.
Ms. Hopson, oh.
Bruce Brady.
Bruce Brady, okay, Mr. Brady.
Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and members of the school board. I'm joined this evening by Meredith Hopson, our Senior Coordinator of World Languages and ESL. We will be providing an overview of the 2021-22 Title II, Title III, and Title IV grant applications for your review and consideration. These three grants provide federal funding to supplement positions and activities in NPS with the goal of increasing student achievement. Title II Part A grant, often identified as TPT for Teacher-Principal Training, provides support for professional development to improve the quality of instruction and enhance effective principal leadership to increase student achievement. The application is for slightly over $1.6 million. Under federal regulations, private schools in the city of Norfolk who wish to participate in the federal grant program receive 8% of the award. The private schools will receive approximately $141,000. This slide shows the personnel positions involved in delivering professional development that are funded by Title II. The positions include seven reading and math specialists in schools, our content specialists, RTI teacher specialists, and the division's professional development coordinator. On this slide, you can see the numerous professional development activities for teachers and principals that are supported by Title II. Among these are literacy training, such as letters, to grow your own reading and math specialist cohorts, support for our AP and IB teachers, principal development, and coaching for teachers. Our new teacher induction program is supported with this grant, and we have set aside funds to provide classroom substitutes for teachers attending professional development. The Title III grant provides funding to support our English learners to become proficient in English as well as their academic achievement in all subject areas and assists general content teachers in becoming more effective in their teaching of L's students. This award is expected to be around $129,000. On this slide, you can see the Title III funds support professional development, part-time pay, summer programs, materials, and our outreach to engage L's families. Finally, Title IV Part A provides funding for a well-rounded education, a safe and healthy environment, and the effective use of technology. The Title IV award is over $1.1 million, with the amount for private schools exceeding $44,000. This slide shows several positions that are supported by Title IV funds as well as funding supports for AP and PSAT exams, anti-bullying and suicide prevention materials, PBIS, and support for junior university, the arts, and world languages. And I'll take any questions you may have about the three federal grant applications.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any questions, Ms. Bassin? Mr. Clayton, you're up next.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you, Mr. Brady, um, for that overview. Um, I do have several questions around the Title II, III, and IV grants. So, first, with the Title II grant, um, you know, we talk a lot when we receive presentations on the academic data. Oftentimes, you know, professional development is, you know, listed as the strategies for improving outcomes, student outcomes. And we often ask, well, how do we know the impact of that particular, um, professional development? And I see in the application that you included, you know, a description of like, I think, in-class modeling, for instance, and the impact that you expect that to have. you expect that to have, if I understood correctly. Or I think that was a question that was asked in the application about what the impact of that PD is. And that's something, I think, as a board, you know, would be interesting to know, that how are, you know, just at a very high level, how the money that we allocate toward professional development is really, you know, what's the return on investment there, and really, how that impacts student outcomes? So, that's something that I think would be good to see. The other thing, the other major thing is around the equitable distribution of qualified, experienced, and effective teachers, the section in that Title II application there. I guess with that, can you share a little bit more about what they are intending to get at with that? And I ask that because, you know, our highest need schools are often the ones that don't have, you know, where we have a larger percentage of long-term subs, or teachers who are provisionally licensed, or, you know, there are vacancies, or they're also new teachers. And so, I guess I would like to better understand, what does equitable distribution of qualified, experienced, effective teachers really look like, other than that they have been deemed as qualified based on, you know, the state's definition? Does that, does my question make sense?
Yeah, well, in determining whether they're properly licensed and endorsed, we work with HR to identify that the teachers have the required endorsements to be teaching those classes. We track that from year to year. We also track that from school to school. So, we did, we've had an increase in properly licensed and endorsed teachers within the district. I think we were at 95 point something this year, which was an increase over last year, and we're going to continue to track that. We also track that by school. We've had some increases there in some of our targeted schools as well. In working with the VDOE in a recent audit they did of Title II, they made some recommendations along those lines that we start tracking the properly licensed and endorsed, and we include additional data, the socioeconomic data of those schools, so we can start tying those numbers together. We put, you know, all the efforts that we can into attracting the best qualified teachers we can and getting them into the locations to where they're needed. We're doing something similar like that right now with our reading and math specialists. We've tiered our schools, and so, we have our priority schools for filling those schools with reading specialists first. And then, after we fill those, then we'll go to the Tier II schools. So, we're trying to, you know, get the best qualified people that we can into those positions.
Okay. So, that's exactly what I'm trying to get at, the strategies used to put the best qualified, or, you know, the highly qualified into those schools that really need it, you know. And if there are suggested strategies around that, that they, you know, that the state is really looking for in this application. So, that's what I was trying to get a better sense of. For instance, like even moving experienced teachers from a school that is higher performing into a lower performing school, you know, are they looking for that, is what I'm asking?
In what we've, in the recent meeting we had with the VDOE, that's not necessarily a fix, because a teacher that is successful at a higher performing school, there's nothing to think that if we put that teacher in a different environment, that they're going to be able to be as effective. You know, teachers kind of find their niche and how they can be successful and within those school environments. So, what we focus on is, you know, not necessarily moving teachers around from one school to another, but working with the teachers in those schools to build their capacity, so that they are effective. And with Title II, you know, we can target those funds for those specific teachers that the professional development is necessary. I found the grant to be flexible enough, you know, that we can, we can use that money with the teachers that need it the most, with the schools that need it the most. And so, we try and build that capacity of those teachers within their, the school that they've been assigned to, to build their capacity, so that they are effective with the children that they're serving.
Okay. Thank you for that. My next question's around Title III. You heard some of the questions that I asked with the Title I grant about, you know, the translation services and things like that. So, I think it sounds like there's going to be resources allocated toward that end. I also, you know, there's a lot of discussion around translation into Spanish, but based on your home language survey, are you finding that we have a need to have translation services in other languages, for instance? And that's something that, you know, I didn't see explicitly shared in the application, you know. What really, you know, the ESL population is broad. What are the home languages, the main home languages of the students in that group?
Yeah, Ms. Hobson can share that. As she comes up, I know we use a program called Voyance, and I believe Voyance can translate into any number of languages. And it's not just in translating paper materials, but if a principal needs to speak with a family, they can use Voyance, and they get an interpreter on the phone. And, yeah, Ms. Hobson can tell us about the variety of languages.
Yeah, sure thing. Thank you. So, right, we have, I love that you know the home language survey. That's how we collect information about what the student's home language is, and it indicates there, too, there's a distinction between what language the child speaks and what language the parent speaks. So, one of your first questions is, which languages are spoken? About 80, no, I'm sorry, 90% of our students are Spanish speakers, about 5% are Tagalog, 5% Vietnamese, and 5%, a couple percent French as well. Now, in terms of, excuse me, so then, the other question, I'm sorry, was, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're asking me.
Strategies question?
The other question was...
Well, in terms of how we reach them. So, we collect the information about, you know, what languages are spoken.
Right.
And Voyance is a translation service. The reason you don't see any of that addressed in the Title III grant, though, is because that type of translation and communication with parents, it really is a division requirement. I mean, it's a civil rights requirement that we are required as a division to locally support that and communicate with parents in a language they can understand.
Right.
So, that's why it's not in the Title III application. Now, if I may to make a distinction about like, the family engagement specialist that you were asking about, that's Title I. So, we have this formal translation that's supported by the division. So, like, the website, you're able to translate it. We've got these formal interpreting services that really do work great to communicate with parents. But the difference is, sometimes you need a warmer approach than the formal translator. So, we might make a formal robo-call home in Spanish to alert a parent that their child is on their third absence. But we would use a family engagement specialist to maybe eventually visit the home and say, hey, listen, why isn't your child, you know, why aren't we getting to school? So, that's the distinction. But we do have, Voyance is available in like, 48 different languages.
Okay. Thank you. And the other question is really, and I'm not, I'm not quite certain who to direct it to, but, so, you know, with the needs assessment that we received a couple weeks ago for the governance training, and then what was included in the application around the gaps among our ESL students, I guess I'm trying to understand better why the data seems, or if there are different data sources being used in the application as what's put in the needs assessment. Because to me, just reading through the application, it seems like, and this is, I guess, to my colleagues on the board, that as we continue to work with the governance trainers, that we may want to look more closely at our ESL population as we set goals around, you know, specific subgroups of students. Because it certainly seemed like there is a great need there, based on the data that was provided in the application. So, that's just something to kind of think about, or, you know, I don't know if Dr. Paul, I don't know who can answer the question around the different data sources and the difference in what was in the needs assessment to what was in the application.
I'm happy to address that.
Right now? Okay, go ahead.
So, the work that we're doing with our governance team, it's not been finalized. And as my team recently met with the two trainers, it was made very clear that we are continuing to work through the process and that the goals, that they may change. So, my team did not wait to the last minute to try to get these applications together. So, what we did, as we always do, we're continuously looking at data. So, we know English and math continue to be a need, and I think I've expressed that to the board. So, the goals that they have developed for these programs are certainly appropriate for the work that we're doing. We can't wait any longer. We have to move forward, because these applications have to be approved sooner than later.
Right.
So, while they may not be specifically word-for-word the same, they are aligned to what the board is working towards, or the governance team.
Right. No, and to be clear, the data, the data in the application really painted a clearer picture for me, honestly, than what was in the needs assessment. So, that's, you know, that was like a snapshot. So, my comment is really toward the board as we continue the work, that we kind of keep the ESL population subgroup, you know, top of mind, too, because the needs are clearly, clearly there for that group. And for the Title IV, you know, mental health is a big area of concern of mine, and we have a Safe Schools Specialist who seems to wear many hats. I mean, I think we also, I think, I think we've modified the title, if I'm not mistaken, to also include mental health. But, you know, I always worry that we put a lot on the plates of an individual or just a couple of individuals, when really, we should put the, you know, really expand resources, especially post, we're not post-pandemic, but as we're in the midst of this pandemic and knowing all the effects that have occurred, you know, I guess, I would like to see, you know, greater resources in that respect, not just at the high school level, but, you know, really holistic, more from a holistic point of view, from the youngest students on up. So, that was it. That's all. I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Resources are always good.
We have increased the resources for that effort. We've almost doubled the funding for this coming school year for those SEL purposes.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Appreciate that insight. Okay, any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Clinton, go ahead.
Just quickly. Title IV Part A, did I hear you mention about art to music? Is, out of that funding, does that also support field trips? Or, I mean, what is the Title IV Part A to the students? Or bring in, would that be like, the enrichment programs that you bring inside for like, the assemblies and things like that for the students?
Yeah, a lot of that is earmarked for maybe teacher professional development in these areas, as well as materials.
Okay.
For arts, for world languages. The music and art office have a local enrichment budget.
Okay.
And so, they're able to use that to bring in a lot of outside organizations with our community partners to provide those art and music experiences for our students.
Yeah. Well, similar to the other piece of that was the PBIS funding to support that. It's one of the things I've mentioned several times about expanding and being able to support that. So, I guess, just roughly, how much of, well, maybe enough, but is that solely how we're funding PBS and our restorative justice type of, or is that just a portion of that?
No, this supports, this is supplemental.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is a local budget, and then we can, with the title grants, we can add to.
Add to it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentations.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our policy discussion with Dr. Paul.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. Just a few highlights for the policy updates, not to go through every single one of them. However, GCBE, GCBE-A, GCBE-B, and GCBE regulation have all been changed to meet the VSBA model policies. In making these changes, GCDDZ was expanded upon to include all necessary items that have been moved from other policies that may not have been in the VSBA model policy. So, that's why there's a lot of changes there, is we wanted to update those to the VSBA model policies. IICA for field trips had a few minor updates. However, there is a requirement for regulations for this policy, so those have been created, and those were included as well. JGDZ and JGEZ has just been updated to define the number of calendar days, as well as reinstatements for long-term suspensions and expulsions. Additionally, JGDZR has been deleted due to its incorporation in the policy. JHH is being recommended to remain, but to become a Z policy. Currently, it is not a Z policy, since it is varied from the VSBA to include post-vention, which VSBA does not do. However, a requirement of this policy is to have notification procedures, which have been developed and are also included within our local policy. Finally, the updates to KNAG are legal references, as well as a cross-reference update for Policy KN, which we approved earlier this policy season. Those are the updates. Thanks for your time, and we stand ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Any questions, Ms. Smith?
It's a policy question, but not regarding these policies. Should I ask it now, or wait until the end?
Go ahead and ask it now.
Okay, and then we can decide. So, what is the district's policy regarding school visits?
I...
Well, it's not a district, I don't think we have a district policy.
That might be the answer.
Right.
Anyone, parents, community, anybody, business owners, just, do we have a district-wide policy? If not, is it up to, what is it? What is the policy? Is it up to each individual school? How is that handled?
I think this is a broader, or bigger conversation, maybe. I didn't realize how broad that would be.
So, we can put it on the agenda, Dana?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that.
Let's do it that way.
Okay. Anyone else?
I actually was going to ask the same thing. We have, we have goals for school-community relations, and I think we need to give some attention as to rights that parents have versus rights that individual members of the public have in terms of visitation, dealing with principals, and making sure that we are clear about that.
Right, I understand.
That we're clear, the public's clear, right. There are no questions?
Dr. Birdsong, do you have any comments on that? You don't have to comment.
Well, I do think we should look at our policy, just because I don't think we've looked at it in a while. But I can say, Ms. Smith, at this time, we, because of the pandemic status, we have not allowed visitors into the school.
Understood. As well as respect that, but it brought up the question, do we even have a policy that addresses something like that? I do believe we do have a policy on school visitations.
We do.
I thought you were talking about school board members specifically. I didn't realize that you were talking about general.
No, the public, because I think sometimes the expectation may be that schools function like libraries, and so, anybody can just walk in and so forth, and that we do have expectations that we communicate with parents. They have a process. Community groups, it's just, you just can't walk into a building in the middle of the academic day and make demands on principals and those types.
Right, I understand.
But also, not just what they can't do, what can they do?
Right. So, is there any opposition to requesting that the administration, you know, pulled... So is there any opposition to requesting that the administration, you know, pull together some policies of, you know, if we, what we have that in this regard, so we can review them?
So that would be appropriate for Dr. Paul and his work with the Policy Review Committee.
Is there any opposition by the, any of the school board members? Okay.
I will put it on our burner for our Policy Review Committee meetings.
Thank you so much.
It may be, to be honest, it may be until July's meeting, because in June's meeting, we have litany of May updates.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure. Yes, it is Policy KK. I just, I don't know it off the top of my head, so I didn't want to speak to it.
Oh, yeah, you probably couldn't hear me ask.
And unbelievably, it's not in this notebook, even though it seems like everything else is. That one is not.
KK, okay. I'll go look for that. Two Ks.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have recommendation, recommended amendments to our school year 21, 22 academic calendar.
I, I, I will be done with the script before the PowerPoint's even up, really.
Okay.
So, good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Jordan, board members, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here to present recommended changes to this year's and next year's academic calendars. Currently, the 2020, 2021 academic calendar has June 18th as a last day for teachers to report to school, and it's also a teacher's record day. The first recommendation to the board is to allow this to be changed to a paid holiday in recognition of Juneteenth. This would make the teacher's last day the same day as the student's last day, June 17th, and all NPS employees would have June 18th as a holiday. Similarly, for the 2021, 2022 academic calendar, June 17th is the last day for teachers, and it's also a teacher's records day. Therefore, the second recommendation is to amend the 2021, 2022 calendar to make June 17th a paid holiday in honor of Juneteenth. This would make the teacher's last day the same as the student's on June 16th, and all NPS employees would have June 17th as a holiday. Therefore, it's recommended that the school board amend both the 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 calendars as presented in recognition and celebration of Juneteenth. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity for those requests. We stand ready for any questions or discussion you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Clanton?
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. Not necessarily a question, but just to remind our colleagues, this came up last year, and we had a unanimous consent around changing the calendar. The only thing that I'd probably, is, as we're looking at changing this year and next year, that we may add a caveat within the, within this motion recommendation to send direction to the administration to look at the Juneteenth holiday as a holiday for our staff moving forward as we build the calendars. That's the only thing that I would probably add.
Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, Attorney Cloud sent an email to, I guess, Dr. Birdsong and the leadership team about some of the dates, and I didn't know if there were some recommended changes associated with that. And then, also, anybody have any idea how much a holiday costs?
So, we're prepared to answer both of those questions, yes. So for next year, you're right, Mr. Jordan, because it appears that the state and the city will be celebrating Juneteenth on the 20th of, of next year.
On that Monday.
And, and so instead of us looking at the 17th as a holiday, we would be looking at the 20th in alignment with, with the city and the state. But our teachers will already be off during that time. However, 12-month employees, and I believe some 12 and maybe 10 and a half month employees will still be working. So if the board approves that, that would be a paid holiday for those individuals. I did ask Mr. Jenkins to prepare in thinking about how much this could potentially cost the district, so I will allow him to succinctly tell you what that looks like.
Well, I guess there's two answers. One, it won't cost anything extra. But the time that employees are off is, what we actually pay for that is about $1.2 million. Just a little over one point, or one, a little under $1.1 million is from the general fund, the others from food service and grants. So about $1.2 million is the value of the wages paid for that day.
So for the purposes of the recommendation slash motion, there's some changes we need to make to what's here, based upon what Attorney Cloud has provided, is that correct?
Yes, instead of the 17th, during June 2022, it would be the 20th, Mr. Jordan, Monday, the 20th, if we are to be aligned with the city and the state.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Make sure everybody got that.
So, okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Paul.
Thank you.
And so, okay, so, yeah, you'll make that. Okay, so we'll be voting on that on the 16th. All right, future agenda items.
Ms. Smith? So I have a, I have a couple of questions, and I apologize if I missed it this past week. Was there, was there an announcement or something about, I'm still, an announcement about our return to school plans for next year about being five days in person? I know we talked about it here, but those questions are still coming up, for whatever reason, and, you know, you all might be getting the same questions, but I, I'm not certain. I might have missed it.
Are you asking clarification, Dr. Birdsong?
And so I'm going to let Mrs. Matthews speak to that, because I know she's working on a piece for the community. Mrs. Matthews?
Yes, good afternoon. I don't know where that feedback is coming from.
Make us stop a little bit.
There you go. Dr. Paul and I met to discuss this, and we will have something coming out to families very soon.
Very soon. Very, very soon?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So to follow up on that too, you know, there's recent guidance that came out from the U.S. Equal Employment Commission about being able for business owners or organizations to require vaccine, vaccination. And so just, I don't expect an answer right now, but I think that's something that, when we do talk about the next school year and what may be required, that that be something that we, we talk about for, for our employees.
Okay. Out with the back-to-school update. Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
So on 6/16, I can't arrive before 3:00 P.M. And what are the start times for the retreats on the 7th, 8th, and 9th?
I'll have that to you very soon.
Okay.
Like in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Tomorrow. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Yeah, in that same spirit about the retreat dates, what is your expectation? I mean, I know that you're planning for, it looks like it's three days.
Retreat and, retreat one day and then organizational, or, sorry, governance training two days.
Governance training for two days, retreat. In the past, I guess we've done this as kind of like a, you could kind of salvage your day. So are we looking that we may have to take time off?
Yeah, they, we're looking at a couple of venues, and so they'd be about, within an hour, about an hour away.
Okay, so, so we're looking at about three days that we're talking about that we're going to have to take off?
Yes.
I've talked about that before.
Um, okay.
Than what we've done before.
I didn't hear you, Dr. Martin.
It's really no different than what we've done before.
No, we, we've kind of been here. And then I could, for me personally, I mean, I'm paid by the federal government, so I have to account for my time. So I would have to make some accommodations or take out of my, you know, the time there. But, you know, we used to end about like three or something like that, and you could still have the rest of the day. So are we talking about going to an alternate location as well?
Going to an alternate location? Yeah.
Well, I'm saying from like here, like, we're, we're not going home every night.
We're not planning to be here. No, I mean, you can if you want to drive, but...
Okay.
Could we maybe do it on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so that the people that are working full-time jobs, I mean, that may not work for them, but that's a possibility, because that's a lot, they must, are you using all your vacation time off for...
Well, here's the thing, AJ and Cindy are only available on Thursday and Friday, and our day-to-day would be, with our staff, would be Wednesday, and that would be asking our staff to work on Saturday.
So are we asking staff to come out for the first day of the day-to-day as well?
Some staff.
Away?
Yes.
So they're going to have to travel too. So we're talking about some additional, I'm just hearing cost, but I mean...
Well, I mean, you guys, we've been to Charlottesville, like, we've been to other places, I don't know.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not taking the entire staff for a day-to-day for travel.
We didn't say entire staff, but some staff.
We don't take a lot of staff who are out of the building, because they're not live, they're not doing all this electronics.
Well, I'm gonna do this, because I don't...
I'll stay out of it.
Dr. Martin? I'm a little concerned about the dates down here, but I'm gonna look for whatever the plan is, and I'll reserve anything of that, and if there's anything additional I have on it, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay. Yep, that's perfect. Anyone else? Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Just wanted to, again, bring up Ingleside and Lake Taylor School, and just make sure that we are providing the opportunities to the families in the Ingleside attendance zone as the board, as the board approved it, so.
Send us an email about that.
Multiple.
Okay. Thank you.
I did get a...
May, may I?
Yes.
So I'm going to need clarification from the board, because in my mind, and in the mind of the administration who has been working on this, we've done what we believe the board has voted and asked the administration to do. So if we've not done that, I'd like to know what it is specifically that we need to do, because we're happy to do that.
So as the board voted in, in April, at the time that we were looking at consideration for the Lake Taylor School, we had community meetings at Ingleside, we had community meetings at Norview Middle. Because we didn't know at the time what the Lake Taylor School program was going to be, the board agreed to allow for families in the Ingleside attendance zone to have a choice option through school year 22 for the Lake Taylor School or Northside Middle. And it was kind of pending, because we wanted to get a update of what the Lake Taylor School would be, and then we would come back and then take action from that point forward. So that's the, that's the piece that I'm trying to make sure that we do not lose, lose sight of, and that's why I shared that, that vote in the, in the video for when we, when we took the vote.
So, at the time, I guess this vote was taken, and again, this was a good faith effort. I wasn't serving as superintendent, nor were any of the administrators serving in their roles. So again, we did the best that we could and did the research, and from speaking with staff members who were here during that time and were intimately involved in the work, according to them, we were supposed to honor a commitment to the 2017, 18 fifth-grade cohort of Ingleside, the opportunity to either attend Norview Middle School or the Lake Taylor School. And so in researching that, we found that 17 families opted to do that, and they have done so, and I believe these children are in the seventh grade right now. So when there was a discussion around 21, 22, the thinking was that these children would be allowed to continue with their middle school experience until that school year, which would make sense, because these children would be in eighth grade next year, which would have given them the opportunity to, to be in sixth, seventh, eighth, in, in eighth grade. It appears that the previous administration, there was no more communication around that after, other than that cohort, and it, so again, we have done what we thought that we were asked to do.
Yeah, and just so you're, just so I'm clear, I'm not blaming what occurred, what you described is what often occurs, that we, and I mentioned this before, this is what happened with Southside STEM, that we have these turnovers, and as a result of the turnovers, what the board voted on and then what may get implemented is different. That's why I raised it in February, I raised it in March, and I'm raising it again. And I know, because I made the motion, we, we amended, however we needed to amend it. Mr. Clanton was participating virtually, and so what it was about was the attendance zone, and that's what I want to make sure that we are clear about the attendance zone, and not confusing that with the godfathering or grandfathering we may have done with a, with a cohort.
So what I'd like to do is have Ms. Tanner go back and pull up the minutes from that meeting for clarification.
It's on video, you can watch it.
Okay, well, I need to watch the video then, but I'd like to see the minutes in the vote.
Uh, April, I think it was April 9th, it was April 2019, whatever the work session was, maybe in the third night. I'll resend it to you.
Thank you.
Oh, if it was in April 2019, I can, yeah, I was at a meeting.
Yeah, you were, you were in that room, you were on the video.
Anything else?
Uh, I'm ready to go.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all for, for a wonderful meeting, great discussion, and be safe driving home, and this meeting is adjourned.